Pre arrangements, thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This meeting is a public meeting held in accordance with recent regulations which permit local authority meetings to be held by remote means. The meeting is being conducted using Zoom as the virtual platform and will be livestreamed for the public to view via the council's Public Eye webcasting site. This will mean that the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. To help make the meeting run as smoothly as possible, it is important that all participants in the virtual meeting room have their microphone on mute for the duration of the meeting. Please only unmute when the Lord Mayor invites you to speak. This will help reduce the scope for noise interference. May I also suggest that all mobile phones and similar devices are switched to silent in order to remove the potential for disturbance when speaking at the meeting. May I remind members of the guidance provided to them yesterday by the clerk Paul Robinson, that if you wish to speak at the meeting, you should use the Zoom chat facility to request to speak. You will need to indicate which item number you wish to speak on, and it is important that the message is sent to all panelists and not directly to the Lord Mayor. Paul will be monitoring the chat on the Lord Mayor's behalf, and messages sent directly to the Lord Mayor run the risk of being overlooked. Please do not use the chat facility for any other purpose. Again, thank you in advance for your cooperation. The regulations on remote meetings require that members are able to hear and be heard by, and where practicable, are able to see or be seen by other members and by members of the public. In the spirit of this, please can I ask that members keep their cameras on for the duration of the meeting? Members of the viewing public may see members of the council looking away from their screens at times. This is because they will need to look at an additional screen or device containing their agenda papers. May I remind members that in addition to the published agenda for the meeting, two other documents have been emailed to you. An email was sent to you yesterday evening by Paul Robinson, attaching the list of amendments to notices of motion to be considered under items six to nine on the agenda. And Abby Brown Sword sent an email shortly before this meeting, attaching the Members' Questions and Answers document, which is to be considered under item five. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Sorry, I'll start again. Thank you, Jill. I shall conclude these housekeeping arrangements by stating that the meeting is scheduled to finish at 5:30pm. I propose to adjourn the meeting at one or more appropriate points through the proceedings to give members the opportunity to take a comfort break. Thank you. This this item of business is to enable members of the council to declare an interest in any item on the agenda. When declaring interest, the member should refer to the item of business, state whether it's pecuniary or personal interest, and outline the reasons for declaration. Does any member wish to declare an interest? If so, please unmute and speak.
Just, just I mean.
Lord Mayor, I'd like to declare an interest in item number six, in that I'm employed in the public sector.
Lord Mayor, I'd like to declare an interest in particular in the second amendment to item six, as I'm employed by the NHS.
Okay. Any more?
Lord Mayor, obviously following on from that, I'll declare the same personal interest as my, as my wife is employed by the NHS. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Okay. Anything to say to that?
I think there's a few more.
Yeah.
I think we need to ask them to shout.
Can you shout up, please, so I could see you and hear you? councillor Drabble?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I too would like to declare an interest in the same item as a day a week working in the NHS.
Thank you. councillor Hammond?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to declare an interest, a personal interest in the same matter because of my fiancee working in the NHS. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mary Lee.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've just declared an interest because I receive a pension from the NHS, which may be impacted on that.
Thank you. Have I missed anyone?
Yes, you missed me, Lord Mayor. I'd like to declare an interest in the same item as my wife works in the NHS.
Thank you. councillor Joe Otten?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm not sure, I'm in the process of divorcing my, my wife, so I'm not sure at what point I need to stop declaring interest in her working in the NHS. But I have a point of order, particularly given councillor Lindas Hammond's declaration. Item six also refers specifically to the GMB and encourages people to join the GMB and endorses a demand of the GMB. And I noticed that councillor Lindas Hammond lists the GMB on his declaration of members' interests, and I would like to invite him to clarify that. I wouldn't want him inadvertently to commit a crime by engaging in something that has a discussable pecuniary interest in him if he receives or his campaign or his employer receives any money from GMB.
Thank you.
That's, that's, thank you. I'm happy to clarify that. In terms of any financial relationship, I have not received any financial support from GMB. I'm happy to clarify that. However, I'm happy to take further advice in terms of any declarations further that might be needed.
Thank you. councillor Huggan?
I declare an interest, my wife works in the NHS.
Sorry? Item two.
Lord Mayor, I've never done this before, but seeing as councillor Mary Lee has, perhaps I ought to. I also receive my pension from the NHS. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Lord Mayor.
Lord Mayor, I, I also receive my pension from the NHS.
Okay.
Lord Mayor, my wife works for the NHS.
councillor Josie Pashake?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm not due to be up for an election this year, but I am a Unison member and I have received money from Unison in the past. And given that my speech will widen it out to all public sector, I'm also receiving a former council pension. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Cliff Woodcraft?
Thank you, Chair. My, my wife is in receipt of a pension from the NHS.
Thank you. councillor Jane Dunn?
GMB member, declaration of interest.
Thank you. Is, is there anyone else? Have I missed?
I'm a GMB member.
Okay, councillor Talib, the same.
A GMB member.
Lord Mayor, I, I receive a council pension and I'm a member of Unite Union.
Thank you. councillor Paul?
I'm Lord Mayor, I'm a member of the GMB as well.
Okay. Have we, councillor Jackson?
GMB, Lord Mayor.
One at a time, please. councillor, I can see councillor Gary Weatherall's got his hand up. Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Chair. We're going to have to sort this out, aren't we? A little bit easier. I also receive a council pension and I'm a GMB member, Chair.
councillor Adam Hurst?
Yeah, I'm a, I receive a council pension and I'm a member of the GMB and I have contributed to my campaigns and that. Might be easier to ask who didn't have an interest.
Lord Mayor, so it comes for Auckland. So, yeah, thinking about it then, I receive a council pension. We, we also receive a pension as, as trustees.
Lord Mayor?
councillor
I'm, I'm a lone exec director and trustee of the Sheffield Hospitals Charity and we support the NHS. So I thought if everyone is declaring, I didn't think it needed to be, but I thought I'd mention that.
Lord, Lord Mayor, I again, like many people, I suspect, receive a pension from local government. And as somebody said, I think we need to clarify this, otherwise it's going to get very silly on these declarations of interest.
I just want to say, if it's already on the declaration, if you're already on the declaration of interest form, you don't need to declare it at this meeting. That's what I want to be trying to say to you. So councillor McCann?
My daughter works for NHS, I'm declaring interest.
Thank you. So are we clear? councillor Sean O'Meara Richards?
In receipt of the South Yorkshire Pension Fund pension. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you.
I, I'm in receipt of a pension too, and I'm a member of Unison. I'm proud of it.
councillor Vicky Priestley?
I receive a small pension, Lord Mayor, from the South Yorkshire pensions.
Are we, are we, are we?
Lord Mayor, Lord Mayor, I, I'm not in receipt of my NHS pension yet, but I will get one, and I'm also a member of Unison.
Thank you. councillor Douglas Johnson?
My, Lord Mayor, it's more of a point of order. I'm just asking if people are giving personal or pecuniary declarations, certainly in respect of those who receive payments from the various unions and who might benefit from the point that councillor Otten made. It's just a question.
Right.
Lord Mayor, Lord Mayor, I also am in receipt of a council pension.
Thank you. Thank you.
Lord, Lord, Lord Mayor, my mind's a pecuniary one. I'm a Friends of the NHS member. I'm also a member of Unison and NAICODs Union. And also, again, that small councillor's pension. Thank you.
Lord, Lord Mayor, my wife receives a council pension.
Alan Hooper, yeah, yeah. Okay.
This can't be right. Lord Mayor.
Just, just a minute. Do we need to go through all this?
Surely not, Lord Mayor.
Why do we just ask who doesn't have an interest?
Surely these, most of these have already been declared on the form that we have to fill in every year, Lord Mayor?
That's what I've just announced, but people still want to, to, to declare an interest, and I've just been advised by legal and governance that if they want to declare an interest, they can do. Okay. Okay.
Lord Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but my pension, I haven't declared my pension on my declaration of interest, Lord Mayor. And it's a small pension from South Yorkshire. That's why I was declaring it.
Okay. councillor Angela Argensio?
Sorry, Lord Mayor. I thought I didn't have to declare it if it's on the website. That's why I put it in the chat. I'm a member of Unite, but it's a personal interest. I receive no money from them. I pay them every month.
Okay. Thank you. councillor Peter Garber?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. My wife receives a pension from South Yorkshire.
councillor Diane, thank you. councillor Diane Hurst?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. If we're declaring South Yorkshire pensions, authority pensions, I'm in receipt of a pension.
Okay. I've seen that on the chat from councillor Dunn. Anyone else? councillor Joe Otten? No.
Sorry, sorry, Lord Mayor, I didn't have a further declaration to make, but I mean, the question of whether any of these are DPIs, I do think if you're in receipt of campaign contributions, that, that would create a DPI and you should withdraw them. And this is why I raised it, particularly with concerns of councillor Lindas Hammond, but obviously applying to anybody else. Obviously, it's a matter for the member concerned, not for me. I'm just trying to be helpful.
I'm going to call in the, the legal and governance to, to answer that one. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor. There was a question raised about salaries before the meeting, and I did send some advice that said that because we are dealing with a motion here, and it's not a decision regarding the pay and terms and conditions, that if members felt that they, that by agreeing to a motion, that then would be submitted to government and may influence the outcome of a pay rise or pay increase for NHS staff, then they, they can declare a personal interest. This isn't a decision on people's paying conditions, it's a motion to support a contact to, to the government on supporting that, that increase in pay. So it's similar with the, the GMB thing. It's not, it's not, this isn't a vote on whether or not we should support GMB. It's, this is a vote on whether actually we're going to, as a council, send a, send a letter of support. So that's where it becomes a personal interest as opposed to, to a DPI.
Thank you. Thank you. Are we all, are we all done now? Thank you.
Lord Mayor.
Right, councillor Drabble?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Like others, I'd also like to declare an interest in terms of being a Unison member and receiving a small pension from the South Yorkshire Pension Fund, and based on, you know, Gillian Duckworth's advice just then. I'd like to make a personal interest, please.
Thank you.
Lord Mayor, as well, I have put something in chat, because we're also, I also receive a South Yorkshire pension as a trustee for a minor. It's a personal.
councillor Kate McDonald?
Thank, thank you, Chair. I wasn't actually, Lord Mayor, I wasn't going to do it, but given what's been said, I receive a small South Yorkshire pension, like most councillors, well, did through here a few years ago, and I'm a Unison member, which is actually on my declaration of interest. It's a personal interest then, obviously.
Thank you.
Lord Mayor?
councillor Marouf?
I haven't, I don't receive a pension from the South Yorkshire Pension Fund just yet, but in ten years' time, I probably will do. So the amount of declarations that are happening, I know it sounds silly, but I will probably receive a pension from South Yorkshire in about eight, nine, 10 years' time.
Did you know his declaration? It's hard to, yes, yeah. Okay, thank you.
I'm already doing it because everybody else is declaring all sorts of things here, so I thought, I know, I know it's not relevant, but I feel more comfortable doing it.
Okay, okay.
Lord Mayor?
Who's that?
What about councillor Caium? I did my, I did put in chat.
councillor Abdul Caium?
Yeah, again, Lord Mayor, just to declare interest, I receive a pension from South Yorkshire Pension Fund and also a member of GMB. Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you. Right. Anyone else? councillor Julie Grokka?
Yeah, a personal interest, please, as it's not on my declaration, both myself and my husband receive a pension.
Thank you. Right. Right. councillor Shafat Mohammed? Oh, he's patient, so it's good.
Yeah, Lord Mayor, same as councillor Marouf, I'm not yet retiring, but I do pay into that South Yorkshire pension.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Lord Mayor, I did actually put down to ask a question.
Thank you. Right. Okay, I want to you want to ask a question, councillor Hurst?
Yeah. It was really just some clarification.
You're not very clear, councillor Hurst.
Is this any better?
Yes, yeah.
Just in response to councillor Otten, I'm not sure, I mean, I can't remember exactly what I put on my form or not, but irrespective of whether I'm a member of Unison or have had any, not Unison, GMB, or had contributions for the campaign, the amount of pension you get, or what the union will contribute to an election fund, wouldn't be affected by this. So is it a pecuniary interest or not? I didn't quite fully understand the implications of what Gillian Duckworth was explaining. Like I say, I get a pension, but that's now not affected by how much salaries go up or down in, in, in local government.
In that case, it's not relevant. Yeah, thank you. councillor Penny Baker?
I just put some comments. Can we move on now, please?
Yeah, thank you, Kenny, Penny. I didn't read full all the chat. Right, I'm going to move back now to item number two, which I missed in all the furor. Apologies for absence. I have apologies here for councillor Jack Clarkson, councillor Lewis Dagnall and councillor Julie Daw. Are there any further apologies, please?
Lord Mayor, Sophie Wilson, Lord Mayor.
Hello? Yeah, I've sent apologies and I need to go and collect my daughter from school shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Francine Johnson, that, okay. Okay, thank you. Right. On declarations of interest. Item, item four, public questions and petitions and other communications. The pre-ele, I just want to make this announcement. The pre-election rules on publicity restrict the use of council resources to promote a particular candidate or party. Therefore, the meeting can proceed with its usual business, but political statements and naming of political parties or prospective candidates in the election need to be avoided when members of the council and members of the public speak at the meetings. This includes answers to questions. And can I say, before I open this up, before I go further, this is my last council, full council meeting. Thank you for your cooperation in the past, and I, I please beg of you to behave yourselves today, being the, the issue on per. Thank you. Public questions can be asked by petition and petitions can be presented at council meetings. Questions or petitions need to be submitted two clear days in advance of these remote meetings to allow time for myself, as the chair of the meeting, to decide how any petitions and questions received are to be presented at the meeting and for invitees to attend the meeting to be, to be issued. For this meeting, five petitions will be presented and questions taken from 13 members of the public. At the appropriate time, the host of the meeting will bring speakers into the virtual meeting room to enable them to present their petition or ask their questions. Once a public speaker has spoken and received a response from the relevant cabinet member, the host will then return them to the virtual gallery. There are 60 minutes allowed in total for ordinary petitions and public questions. In view of the number of petitions and questions received for this meeting, please may I request that the petitioners be brief and keep within their time limit of three minutes. May I also remember that cabinet, may I also, may I also request that cabinet members keep within their maximum time of five minutes when responding to the petitions. May I also ask that questioners be as brief as possible when asking their questions and that cabinet members keep their responses short and succinct. Thank you in advance for your cooperation. I have received a petition. I've received an electronic petition containing 542 signatures requesting that Bring Out Your Rubbish Days be brought back to prevent fly tipping. Michelle Hinson wishes to address the council. Please can be, Michelle be admitted to the virtual room?
Hello?
Hi, Michelle. Would you like to ask your question, please?
Yes.
Present your petition, please, sorry.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm Michelle Hinson, I'm 31, and I'm a member of the Sheffield Litter Pickers and the S20 slash S21 Litter Pickers group. I've seen and been a part of moving hundreds of bags of rubbish and fly tipping in my local area. This rubbish and fly tipping is then reported to the council or on the Fix My Street app, having the council to drive around Sheffield collecting the weekly litter pick hordes. Sheffield in itself has an enormous fly tipping and litter problem, and it is a never-ending task for the council and for volunteers to keep on top of. I am from the Westfield area of Sheffield myself, and over the few months I have been volunteering to clean up the area, there is just a never-ending amount of rubbish and fly tipping. There's no, no excuse to fly tip, but I've been having a few conversations with local residents, I believe a lot of the fly tipping comes from low-income households who cannot afford to pay someone to take their household things away, and they do not own a car. Therefore, in their eyes, the fly tipping is the only resolution for this. I have had quite a lot of good feedback on the old Bring Out Your Rubbish Days and how this helped many households in Sheffield, and also how it helps highly reduce fly tipping and littering of the local areas. When this service got took away, fly tipping and littering in the area seemed to escalate. With the amount of fly tipping that is happening, especially now due to COVID and not wanting to queue at recycling centres, I believe having a designated Bring Out Your Rubbish Day could be more beneficial to communities and, and compared to having to dig out fly tipping from bushes, country roads and riverbeds, be more cost-effective in the long run. Something has to change or be put in place to help persuade the ones who do fly tip to stop. And at the moment, as recent TV programmes have shown, not much is in place to catch the perpetrators. To help this situation, I believe the result is in the prevention, giving those people another option, an easier option to pop it outside of their house, to get collected legally and safely instead of being left to rot in the bottom of a stream or bush. What can we be, what can be done about this?
Thank, thank you, Michelle. Good to see you, love. May I call upon councillor Jones to respond, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you, Michelle, for, for bringing this petition. And your point is really well made and really well put. I really appreciate your comments and also all the hard work you do. You and many other litter pickers across the, across the city put in a massive shift for the city in removing stuff that is often discarded far too flippantly and far too easily by others. And you're quite right, enforcement is a tool that we have available for us, to us as a council, and we do use it, but it's, it's not the best tool. Prevention is by far the best way forward. Now, at the last full council, the emergency full council, we brought proposals for the establishment of local area committees that will be voted on in, in May's elections. I for one hope that those local area committees will be endorsed by the people of Sheffield, because through those local area committees, I think we will have the opportunity to establish Bring Out Your Rubbish Days in coordination with local councillors and, and delivered with local communities. I, I believe that tackling litter and the fly tipping and littering that we do see is best placed at the, the local community area, where, where it gives the power back to people to take ownership of their streets and their community. So, so I, I thank you for your petition, and I know that if we do get the lax, I, I will certainly be doing Bring Out Your Litter Days. And if we don't get lax, I'll, I'll still be seeing if I can put skips on, as I know other councillors have done in other places. But you're absolutely right. Everybody that I know who can remember Bring Out Your Rubbish Days absolutely loves them, and you're spot on, so yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Please can Michelle be returned to the public gallery? Thank you.
Thank you.
Petition two, requesting a CCTV system in Page Hall. I've received an electronic petition containing six signatures requesting a CCTV system at Page Hall. Damien Callahan wishes to address the council. Please can Damien be admitted to the virtual room? You there? You there, Damien? Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Ah, hello, Damien. Yes, we can hear you. Would you please present your petition? Thank you.
Yeah. Originally, I, we, we did it because my father and his family's lived there for like 20 years, and there's been a growing problem over the last two years or so. South Yorkshire Police has put an independent police for, police team in, in the area. And we just wanted to aid, aid them really with, because with their, with their investigations into the, into the crimes that are going on, the littering, the, and other crimes. And we just, I would just feel that the CCTV cameras would, would give us, would be able to single out the individuals rather than this tension that's growing where they seem to think it's a group of people rather than individuals that are, that are doing, they're doing the crimes. There's been a lot of tension in the area, and it's because nobody knows who it is that's doing it. So they're just saying, oh, it's all the Roma that are doing it. And I've sort of explained, look, to my dad and other family members and, and friends, it's not all of them. It's going to be individuals and, and if we put CCTV cam footage up, then individuals will get singled out, get dealt with, and I believe the area will go back to just how it was.
Thank you. Thank you, Damien. Can I call upon councillor Wood to respond, please?
Yeah, thank you, Damien, for the petition, and I fully understand everything that you are saying in that. Part of the new community safety plans that we're bringing forward does have an element of, of the use of CCTV. We're going to be trialling two areas very shortly with that. What we've discovered really with CCTV is it's no good if it's not monitored. If you want to really make it effective, it's got to have linked-up monitoring by either the police or by the council's monitoring suite, which is in the town hall. So for the first time, we, we're doing two trials. So for the first time, we're doing two trials to see what effect that has. And if that's successful, that will form a tool within the community safety plans that would be able to deploy it into any area of the city. It would probably be done through the local area committee who would consult whether there was the demand from local residents to do that. That is the whole idea of local area committees, to let people like yourself make representations to them and get the support for those types of projects. So it is on our agenda, we are doing a trial with it, we're doing a monitored trial with it and it will hopefully form part of the ongoing plans of the community safety development across the city.
Thank you, councillor Wood. Thank you, Damien. Please can Damien be returned to the public gallery? Thank you. I've received a petition, an electronic petition requesting a pedestrian crossing on Abbey Lane between Echolsall Woods. Chloe Cheeseman wishes to address the council. Please can Chloe be admitted to the virtual room? Thank you. Okay, are you there, Chloe?
Oh, good afternoon, Lord Mayor.
Oh, good afternoon. Can you present your petition, please? Thank you.
I'm so sorry, my camera's not working. Are you happy for me to proceed?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you so much. Well, good afternoon councillors and Lord Mayor. My name is Chloe Cheeseman and on behalf of Friends of Echolsall Woods, I'm really pleased to present our petition, which is in support of safe pedestrian crossings on Abbey Lane. Echolsall Woods, as I'm sure you know, is a fantastic ancient woodland and it offers thousands of us from all over Sheffield the chance to enjoy nature. But unfortunately, visiting the woods or the popular woodland discovery centre is not always safe. Many visitors must cross over Abbey Lane, which is a busy main road. It's got a 40 miles per hour speed limit. Now, there are six major woodland footpaths that cross over Abbey Lane, but there are no crossing facilities along that 500 metre stretch. You've got the speed limit, the bends in the road, double parking of cars and a hazardous junction at Whirlodale Road as well, which exacerbate the challenge of crossing here. This issue is quite acute. Over a two-hour period on the Sunday 3rd of January, we counted 474 people struggling across the road. These people really need safe ways to cross. Since February, we've had over 5,700 people sign this petition from across Sheffield and beyond and we've had nearly 400 supportive comments for safe crossing improvements. What the comments highlight is that the road is intimidating and it is perceived as dangerous to cross. So Fran from S11 says, "You feel you are taking your life in your hands." Phil, S8 says, "It is an accident waiting to happen. I have had to jump backwards to avoid being hit by a speeding van." And Julie, S7 says, "It is impossible to cross safely without cars deliberately stopping to allow me to cross or beeping at me as I'm trying to dash over." Julie, S10 says, "I frequently drive down this road and I cannot believe there is not a crossing. There are loads of pedestrians, children, dogs." So many comments are from families who are struggling to cross over with young children, while there's other comments that speak to the disproportionate negative impacts that this is having on older, less mobile and disabled people. One Walk Leader with Step Out Sheffield commented, "I have to assist several elderly people to cross Abbey Lane on our walks. It can take ages to wait for a gap in the traffic." And finally, some commenters are noting that the lack of crossing has actually stopped them accessing part of the woods entirely. So Helen, S11, she's eight months pregnant, she comments, "I try to avoid crossing into the woods with the discovery centre, which is a shame as it's my local capé." And Margaret, S7 says, "Abbey Lane is too dangerous, I've stopped trying to cross, so I miss out on a relaxing walk." So the petition asks for Sheffield City Council to act urgently to remedy this. In particular, we're asking that the Transport Department investigates, plans suitable crossing improvements and that the Friends of Echolsall Woods are consulted in the planning of these improvements so that our knowledge of the woodland use can really help find the best solutions. And we'd ask, please, that a plan is produced, including financing options by the summer and that, please, the council commits to act on this as a priority. Thank you so much for taking the time to receive our petition.
Thank you very much, Chloe. Can I call upon councillor Julie Grokot, Cabinet Member for Transport and Development, to respond, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Good afternoon, Chloe. Thank you for presenting your position from the Friends of Echolsall Woods at council today. You're talking about an area of Sheffield that I know well. I lived in the area for a number of years, so I do understand the concerns that you and other petitioners have braced today. The pandemic has resulted in many requests for crossings and speed reduction measures as residents have taken the opportunity to explore their neighbourhoods on foot and have become frustrated by driver behaviour on local roads. We would like to encourage the increase in pedestrian activity for leisure purposes and are considering what measures would be suitable on Abbey Lane to reflect the increased popularity of Echolsall Woods. There are many points where people walking in Echolsall Woods can cross Abbey Lane and we need to consider what measures would be most appropriate to address this demand. This part of Abbey Lane is pleasant tree-lined route and many measures introduced must be sympathetic to the surroundings while also being effective. To this end, feasibility study has already been commissioned to identify various options to install crossing facilities on Abbey Lane to support the growth of popularity of this valuable woodland amenity and I look forward to keeping you and your friends group updated on the progress of the study. And thank you, Chloe.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chloe. Please can Chloe be returned to the public gallery? Thank you. I've received an electronic petition containing 424 signatures requesting a speed camera in Mosburgh and that the council worked with the police to implement local measures to tackle speeding in Mosburgh. Curtis Crossland wishes to address the council. Please can Curtis be admitted to the virtual room?
Hiya, is it working?
Can you present your petition, please?
Yeah, well, first of all, and I better watch my words here, but I've asked quite a few questions at full council meeting and I'd like to say, Lord Mayor, that despite our personal situations, let's say, you have always been professional and a great Lord Mayor. So I'm sure I speak for everyone who submitted questions and petitions during your time as Lord Mayor when I say thank you for everything you do. So, on to the, on to my petition. I've been contacted by a resident who lives on Mosburgh High Street. She's had three parked cars written off because of speeding cars crashing into them. Another resident on High Street has had four parked cars written off because of speeding cars. We've seen two accidents just within the last few weeks in Mosburgh. Something does need to be done to tackle speeding here. The reason many communities across Sheffield feel ignored is because of the do-nothing attitude. Just last night, the local MP said nothing could be done about speeding in Mosburgh. So I'd like to know if the council have undertaken any research to come up with that conclusion and if so, can we see it? When I presented the petition for a crossing on Station Road, the cabinet member said nothing could be done at the time, but I submitted several questions, in fact, questions to every council meeting since then and eventually the council changed its mind and something is now being done. The same can happen here. Over 400 people have signed this petition. I think something can be done with a can-do attitude. So let's listen to locals, let's get the traffic experts looking into Mosburgh, let's find solutions and let's make Mosburgh's roads safer. Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis, and thank you for your kind words. And may I call upon the Cabinet Member for Transport and Development, councillor Julie Grokot, please?
Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Good afternoon, Curtis. As a retired police officer, I understand only too well the difficulties and dangers that road safety presents and I thank you for bringing the petition this afternoon, which reads, "We, the undersigned, call on Sheffield City Council to provide Mosburgh with a speed camera, to work with the police and implement other local measures to tackle speeding in the Mosburgh area. I hope that you will let petitioners know that the introduction of safety cameras on our roads is managed by South Yorkshire Police, who are part of the South Yorkshire Safety Camera Partnership rather than the council. My understanding is that although fixed cameras are an effective solution, the process of installing one takes a long time and is very expensive. However, as the council moves to local area committees, you could contact your local area committee once established in May, requesting they work with the South Yorkshire Camera Safety Partnership and the police to look at how these situations can be resolved if you are adamant that it is a speed camera that is required to solve the problem. I am happy to report that the request made by the petitioners has been forwarded to the Camera Partnership for their attention. However, I understand you may wish to make the petitioners aware that there has been an unprecedented increase in such requests and it may be some time before mobile enforcement occurs in Mosburgh. I have requested that South Yorkshire Police consider Mosburgh for an initiative called Community Speed Watch. This is a road safety initiative undertaken by local volunteers and police officers to monitor the speed of passing vehicles using handheld speed detection devices. The details of those drivers observed to break the speed limit are processed by the police, who will then issue a letter to the vehicle owner advising them of the dangers of speeding and reminding them of the law. The Covid restrictions mean that this initiative has been paused, but it will recommence."
No, is that thing on? Yeah. Thank, thank you. We didn't hear the last few bits of that, Julie. Could you just repeat the last few bits of that so we can all hear? Thank you.
I'm sorry, Lord Mayor. I'm not too sure where you got to. Was it about the details of the initiative?
You called the handheld cameras.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll give you the last bit. I requested South Yorkshire Police consider Mosburgh for initiative called Community Speed Watch. It's a road safety intervention undertaken by local volunteers and police officers to monitor the speed of passing vehicles using handheld speed detection devices. The details of drivers observed to break the speed limit are processed by the police, who then issue a letter to the vehicle owner advising them of the dangers of speeding and advising them on the law. The Covid restrictions mean that the initiative has been paused but will recommence once the restrictions are lifted. And I understand this is something that has gone down well in the Mosburgh area previously when councillor Downing introduced the scheme in the area. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I hope you got the same time.
Yeah, thank you. We've heard all that. Thank you, councillor Grokot and thank you, Mr Crossland, Curtis. Can you please return Curtis to the public gallery? Petition requesting that household waste recycling centres be open seven days a week and the reintroduction of the Bring Out Your, I think that's supposed to be Rubbish Days. I have received an electronic petition containing 265 signatures requesting that the household waste recycling centres be open seven days a week and reintroduction of Bring Out Your Rubbish Days. Adeel Mohammed wishes to address the council. Please can Adeel be admitted to the virtual room? Hello there. Hiya, Adeel.
Hello, Lord Mayor.
Could you present your petition, please?
And the street cleaning team, who have continued working through the pandemic. Also, a big thank you to all the volunteer litter pickers across the whole city who have given up their time to help keep our city clean. Could I also take this opportunity to thank the community volunteer litter pickers who were out early this morning, working alongside staff from council to clear up the rubbish left behind from yesterday in Encliff Park? And I hope, Lord Mayor, through you, we can send a message to people that we welcome you using our fabulous parks, but please take your litter and rubbish home with you. However, today I bring this petition because the people of Sheffield are fed up. They're fed up with the level of fly tipping and litter they see across the city. They are fed up with having to queue over an hour to get into recycling sites and then running the risk of getting fined. And they are fed up of the lack of action from this council who have been too slow in responding to local community concerns. Speaking to residents about this, there seems to be one issue coming up time and time again and that is accessing the household recycling sites is a problem. Whether that is being queuing up over an hour to try to get into those sites, having to have a permit for vans to access them or not having suitable transport available to get to them, the current system is broken. This has been a problem even before the pandemic, but the pandemic has seemed to make the situation worse. So what has the council done? They start fining people trying to access the recycling sites. They vote against introducing Bring Out Your Rubbish Days earlier this month and they vote against opening the recycling sites seven days a week as well. That's why I'm calling on this council to reconsider its previous decision and reinstate Bring Out Your Rubbish Days, open all household recycling centres seven days a week and extend their opening times, collect waste more frequently from smaller recycling sites in locations like supermarket car parks and stop fining people for wanting to access the sites. Rather than putting in barriers for people, why not break them down and introduce a booking system for the household recycling sites like other councils have? Some of the things I'm proposing today will help deal with the fly tipping and litter problems in this city. It is time for the council to act as action speaks louder than words. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Adeel. Can I call upon councillor Mark Jones, Cabinet Member for Environment and Street Scene and Climate Change, to respond, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor and thank you, Adeel, for bringing your petition. And I appreciate the work that you've been doing and actually I have to echo your words about people not being selfish and taking their litter home and not throwing it on the floor. It's not appropriate that people should decide to go to the park and then litter it and then people feel obliged to come out and clean up after them. It's selfish behaviour and I'm sure you wouldn't make any excuses for it. I know I certainly do not. Throughout the pandemic, the council has worked hard to keep services running. At times, the streets have been abandoned due to Covid, but the council has never abandoned our city. Sheffield is one of only two councils that kept its household waste recycling centres open across the country. Sheffield received national recognition for the work we did and the input from our staff helped frame the response of councils across our nation to running their household waste recycling centres during the pandemic. Rebecca Powell, the Under-Secretary for State for the Department of Environment, Food and Rural Affairs, graced us with her presence to thank everyone for their efforts. Yet again, where Sheffield leads, others follow. I'm rightly proud of all the work put in by this council and its staff and our partners. We have faced many difficulties during the pandemic, but our staff have gone above and beyond for all our citizens and I would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone within the council as well as those working at our sites for their dedication and hard work. We have five HWRCs, Household Waste Recycling Centres, across our city and discussions have been ongoing for some time, especially as we look to come out of national lockdown conditions. Over the last two months, officers have worked with me and many interested activists and citizens to raise concerns of local residents and discussions around access to all five sites have advanced at pace with Veolia and workers to get to a position where we are today. So, I am pleased to announce that all sites will be open seven days a week as of the 1st of April, that's tomorrow, from 9:30 in the morning to 5:30. The new opening times, the earlier opening times are a result of a consultation that has been running for several months and was concluded and been reflected back on. In addition, Blackstock and Baiton sites will be open until 8pm on Easter bank holiday. That's Good Friday, Saturday, Easter Sunday and Bank Holiday Monday. So, Blackstock and Baiton will be open from 9:30 in the morning till 8 to allow others to get on with Bring Out Your Rubbish. We are also, we're in discussion with unions and our providers, Veolia, we are able to lift the restrictions of numbers on sites. We are recommending that people will have to wear face coverings in accordance with Covid restrictions, but we are delighted to say that people will now be able to visit the sites and we will be able to increase the capacity of those sites. That reduced capacity has significantly hindered access to our sites. Anybody not seeing that needs to give themselves a bit of a sense check, I'm afraid to say. It is the responsibility of customers attending our sites to maintain social distancing and be respectful of others and it is unfortunate that our workers will not be able to help them lift stuff out of their vehicles. out of their vehicles. We must protect the public and our workers at this time. So we would ask that everyone using our household waste recycling centres do so responsibly and proportionately. Also, on Saturday and Sunday this weekend, we are trialling provision of additional capacity using Veolia's Waste Transfer Station at Tinsley Park Road. The postcode for that is S nine five DL. Between the hours of nine thirty and five thirty, a bin lorry will be available and a skip will be available. You can bring down small items of household rubbish, bags of rubbish that can go into the bin lorry, and where you've got garden waste, they can go into the skip for bulky items. We are continuing to work, to consult with workforces, to extend the seven-day opening of all our centres till eight PM at all our sites. We are continuing to evaluate if we have any sites that we can mobilise on a temporary basis. But this is looking unlikely due to planning and site licensing requirements. As you can imagine, storage of waste and sites that handle processed waste regulations need regulating very tightly, and legislation is very prescriptive on this. With respect to your quest to bring out rubbish days, I refer you to the answer already given to Michelle earlier. So we have been dealing with this for months. We continue to deal with this for months, and I hope you appreciate the works that we'll be doing. And I hope you recognise that the openings from tomorrow have been in the planning for some weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Adil. And can I ask Adil be returned to the public gallery, please? We now move to public questions. May I remind questioners of my earlier statement requesting that questioners be as brief as possible when asking the questions and that cabinet members keep to their responses short and succinct? This is to ensure that as much time as possible is available for the other items of business on the agenda for today's meeting. Thank you. I have got a question by five, wait a minute, one, two, three, six people, but one of the persons is not available here. So the question to William Martin will be a written answer. So could you please bring into the room Lindsay Hewson, Peter Housley, Jenny Garrett, Olivia Hill and Phil Carter?
No.
Right. Yeah. Is Lindsay Hewson here? No. We will. If Lindsay's not here, we'll pass her question on for a written response. But if the other questioners could please ask your questions, one after the other, starting with, if Lindsay's not here, starting with Peter Housley, and then Jenny Garrett, Olivia Hill and Phil Carter. And then I'll get the cabinet member to respond after all the questions have been asked. So if the first questioner would like to ask the question, please?
Yeah, am I on?
Peter, Peter Housley, yes, you're on.
That's me, can you, yeah. Well, it's a question generally about the cladding crisis that you're probably aware of. It's gaining national knowledge now. And it's not just a cladding. The cladding came from the Benfell accident disaster about four years ago. But they found out it's not just the cladding. There are other historic issues with the buildings, many, many buildings across the country. But in the north, it's mainly in Manchester, Leeds and to an extent Sheffield. A lot of these problems, you know, they've been ongoing for quite a while. And my question is this, why am I in the firing line? You know, there just seems to be so many others that are more culpable before me. I mean, to read out my question, first of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to ask this, but how can so many buildings be built to an inferior standard? It's just coming to light now, but in fact, a lot of leaseholders won't be aware yet. So this is just like the tip of the iceberg. You know, a lot of people that I think they're probably not involved in this, but they're going to be, it's starting to escalate now. You can see nationally, the picture's getting worse and worse. I attended a meeting by Zoom the other week with Sheffield Council, which were very good, the cladding groups were there. And, you know, the right questions were being asked, but it did bring it home to me as a, you know, a third party, that a lot of the information hasn't been put together yet, not just by yourself, but by government. And there's so many questions that need answering four years down the road. And a lot of these people, these leaseholders, are getting, there's going to be massive costs built through to them. So quickly on with my question. It's that how can so many buildings be built to an inferior standard with poor workmanship, incorrect design, unsuitable and not up to specification materials? There are correctly so authorities and official bodies in place to monitor, check and sign for these words before being declared safe. For example, you've got building control, architects, surveyors, the legal side of things, the insurers, the developers, of course, and also such as NHBC. Now, they're all involved. So where did it go so wrong? You know, to me, I'm just a little man involved, the leaseholder, pulling the bottom of the pile for any blame in this. I've gone through all the corrective procedures, I've gone through the legal system. I employed a really good Sheffield firm of lawyers, solicitors to reconvene on the property years ago. This is, I'm talking about 10 years ago. You know, is 10 years too much for a house? The only thing I would leave it on is that put yourself in the position of these leaseholders. You know, say someone comes knocking on your door or an envelope dropped through your door tomorrow and said, oh, by the way, that house, that lovely new house that you're living in now, it's not being built correctly. It's got the wrong materials in it. And it's in a right state, and you're going to have to pick up the bill. I don't think you'd be very pleased now. And a lot of these, I feel sorry for the younger ones, the younger leaseholders, you know. I'm good towards the end of my working life, but I need the money, believe me. But a lot of these younger ones, if they go bankrupt, are they going to survive that? But anyway, I'd be interested to find out where we are with things. And it's a predicament that's going to get worse, I'm afraid, in the very near future.
Thank you very much. Can I call on Jenny Garrett, please, to ask a question?
Hi there. Yeah, I'm kind of following on from Peter's point there. So I'm also asking a question relating to the motion further down the agenda on the cladding crisis. And I am a leaseholder in the Wicker Riverside Building in Sheffield. I guess you'd describe me as one of the younger ones Peter's referring to. I'm 24, so I bought my property two years ago, and I'm now in a situation where I'm being told that I'm liable to pay for remediation costs for a building that was actually built when I was 11 years old. So I was doing my SATs in year six at the time. And I am part of the Sheffield Cladding Action Group. So we represent all the buildings that have come out of the woodwork so far that are being caught up in this crisis. And if, I don't know if people on this call are aware, but we were actually, our building was evacuated two weeks before Christmas in December. So it has been a horrendous few months, not knowing when the bills are coming through, whether we're going to find out something else has gone wrong. And so in relation to the motion for basically backing the under-cladding scandal campaign later on in the agenda, my question on behalf of the Sheffield Cladding Action Group is, will the council commit to questioning any developer which applies for construction contracts or planning permission within Sheffield on their suitability for works if they have existing residential buildings with unresolved cladding and/or fire safety issues relating to the original construction? And just to contextualise, essentially what we're saying is that if we're stuck in buildings that have been badly constructed and those developers are not stepping up to remediate, we don't think we should be living in a city where the council are allowing those same developers to continue to be given contracts and planning permission without at least having to, you know, answer their questions and being sort of grilled about the situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jenny. Can Olivia Hill, can you ask your question, please, next?
Hello, and thank you for having me here to ask my question. I'm sorry that I am, it might be a little bit noisy. So I think, following on from Jenny and from Peter, my question is also about the cladding scandal. I would say I was one of the younger ones described. So I bought my flat only two years ago, which is post Benfell. I'm feeling extremely hard done by by the situation that I have put my life savings into what we are recommended to do, purchase a property to make yourself financially stable for the future. And that idea and dream has completely not come true. I'd like to know what the council could do to help the Sheffield Cladding Action Group, which has been set up solely by affected leaseholders within Sheffield. Our aims are to join other leaseholders together, hand out information and try to support each other, put this out to the media and yourselves. Is there anything that the council could suggest to us in forms of financial support? How we could go about issuing our committee to improve things within Sheffield? And, you know, if we were a charity, would we have other things that would be available to us from the council? Any strategies like that which would help the cladding scandal, especially within Sheffield, where 36 buildings have pre-registered for the building safety fund to take government's money? And we are currently aware of around 14 buildings in Sheffield. So there's a lot of people out there that are in the same situation as us and still don't know if we would very much like your support with helping local people get in touch with ourselves and get the help from the government that they can and are allowed to get. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Olivia. And finally, Phil Carter, please.
Can you say your name?
Yeah, Phil, can you ask your question, Phil, please?
Yeah. Well, first of all, I just want to say I'm amazed that all the other questions relate to fire safety, because I submitted mine totally independently of the others. Not sure about them, but it just shows you how important this issue is to people. My question relates to what was Agenda Nine, Agenda number nine, about building safety for this meeting today? But the issue is so important that thousands of Sheffield leaseholders are affected, and it should be much, it should have been much higher up the agenda. There are so many buildings in Sheffield that have applied to the government's Building Safety Fund for grants, in the hope that crippling remediation costs that they shouldn't be paying for and the original developers should be paying for are not passed down to them. There's lots of words in the agenda about what the government should be doing, but what about the council? And some commitments that were made to me months ago to write to those developers and others who are culpable. The council needs to be more proactive, as its MPs are. So basically, what actions are the council themselves actually taking on behalf of leaseholders? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Carter. Can I call upon councillor Paul Wood, cabinet member for Neighbourage and Community Safety, to respond to those questions, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Peter, Jenny, Olivia and Phil for bringing these questions today. First of all, from Peter's perspective, how were so many buildings built to an inferior design? This has to go back to the deregulation of building control, which goes back over nearly 20 years with central government, when a lot of the, previous to that, a lot of the powers resided within the local authorities. Those powers have been eroded over the years till we've now got the horrendous situation where a building inspector doesn't even need to visit the site. And the very first issue I had with this wasn't a cladding issue. It was a block on, just off, just off Queen's Road, a brand new block that we had to evacuate at midnight. And I was down there with our officers because there was no fire safety installation in that block at all. And we spent four hours evacuating the entire block. And when we checked the building control and inspection, it had all been done by CD to a London firm. I mean, we've raised this consistently with the government, but it does go down to lack of control and lack of involvement from the local authority. And that is something that we are pressing. Janet Sharp, the director of housing, and myself have had meetings with the government minister, and he has agreed to put forward to Jenrick some amendments to the housing bill that would give the local authority the powers to issue a right-to-reside certificate. We're still working on that at the moment. I'm going to be speaking about this in the amendment, so I won't go through everything. Jenny, I will give you this commitment, as long as I'm the cabinet member for housing, any development that we do, I will instruct our officers to question them if they have any involvement that we know of within these building irregularities within the leaseholder properties. I only look after social housing, so that, and I will speak to my colleague, councillor Grokka, of what we can do collectively over the entire housing building. We will need to check through legal what we can and legally can't do. But I would fully personally support that we didn't use contractors who blatantly disregarded building controls and took cheap options to maximise profits in the private sector. So I will give you that commitment. Olivia, how we've been able to support CAG at the moment is the council who's lobbied extensively for the money to get the alarms fitted in some of the buildings. We've, as you know, got £500,000 grants so far. We're discussing with Lord Greenoff further grants to cover more of the buildings. You've recognised, and Phil has, there's 36 buildings potentially looking at at the moment. We, as a council, have recognised 133 buildings that we will be doing full investigations into. We will need a private rent detector team and a private landlord team to go through each of those buildings. That we're fully happy with both fire regulations. Phil mentioned that a lot of this is about fire. In most cases, we're pretty sure the grants will provide remedial work for cladding work. What the grants are being absolutely refused for is fire safety work at the moment, Phil. So most of the cladding work will be funded, we understand, from government grants. But they, apart from the alarm systems, there's very little movement. We speak to MHCLG on a weekly basis because we're having to put continuous grants through to help with like the alarms and the £500,000 we got awarded a few weeks ago. What the council can do, it can give a lot of advice, again, through citizens' advice as well, help people who are struggling with their bills and that. What the council doesn't have is millions of pounds to remedy this situation. And anyone who says they could do that would be just leading you a path that would never happen. What we can do as a council is we can fully support everything we can do to get this matter resolved. But what there isn't is a pot of gold at the council's finances that can resolve the millions and millions of pounds that's going to need to be invested in each of these blocks in some cases. So what we will do, we will make sure we have access to government. We will lobby in conjunction with the Cladding Action Group. We will press for any grant we can get to support. And we will provide all the other council services that we provide to every resident in the city, which covers mental health, it will cover debt advice. And we will make sure we provide all those services. As I say, I'll speak a little bit more on all of this when we get to the amendment. But thank you all for bringing these questions. And I do fully support the aims of we. And I do fully support the aims of what you were all saying. And I can't think of any situation more horrific than having to be in your home and then be hit like a sledgehammer with what's happening with this current crisis. Thank you for your questions.
Thank you. And thank you to Peter, Jenny, Olivia and Phil for coming with the questions. And can these people now please be returned to the public gallery? Thank you very much. Please, can Nigel Slack be admitted to the virtual meeting room? Thank you. Nigel, are you there?
I am, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to ask your question, please?
I will indeed. And good luck with items six to eight when you're trying to herd this bunch of cats on perder issues. I hope you enjoy it. Question one. A week is long time in politics, and this story about John Lewis appears to be developing as a public backlash against the decision gains momentum. However, in many ways, the questions I put over the weekend stand, but with one small addition. With the closure of the John Lewis store, how can Sheffield City Council help ensure that the partnership provides proper support for the employees that are about to be thrown out of a job? What is the financial impact of the loss of rent and rates on that building? And will this be compensated by the penalty clause for the early end of the lease, and to what amount? There is a deal of positivity about future uses for the building, but much of this will depend on the refurbishment needs of the building. Is the building in need of structural repair as well as refurbishment? What are the current estimates for that refurbishment? And will Sheffield City Council be carrying that out before future plans are in place? And finally, with Lord Mayor's indulgence, I'm sure the detail will be shrouded in commercial secrecy, but what is the basis of the ongoing discussions with John Lewis to potentially relocate them to a smaller retail location within the city? Thank you.
Thank you. I would normally be asking councillor Mazza Iqbal to respond to this, but I understand Mazza is not here? Is Mazza in the, is Mazza here? Mazza Iqbal, councillor Mazza Iqbal? I understand he's not here. Could I, could I ask him in respect of your question and with respect to you, Nigel, if he would respond to you in writing? Would that be satisfactory?
It would, or...
I've just, I've just found out that he's not here. So, you know, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Can Nigel Slack please be taken back out to the virtual meeting room? Right. Can Zobia Rafik please be admitted to the virtual meeting room? Are you there, Zobia? Are you there, Zobia? Ah, is she muted? Are you there, Zobia? Ah, thank you, Zobia. Would you please ask your question? Thank you.
Yeah. Good afternoon, all. Good afternoon, Lord Mayor. Good afternoon, councillors. I would like to put to your attention a serious concern that I have. Now, I'm a landlord and I had a landlord tenant dispute for a £300 deposit payment. Now, in December, 40 members of the association called Acorn Sheffield protested outside my home during a national Covid lockdown online speakers of how I was a rogue landlord, fully aware that they would be marching to the landlord's house as per the comments on Facebook. Now, the deposit protection scheme awarded me the deposit and informed me that I should also pursue the tenant for rent arrears. However, Acorn have till today continued to intimidate me. I have been bullied with frequent visits to my home with malicious items, cards, messages, letters, posters to my neighbours. They've also protested outside my rented accommodations, made false allegations on social media, harassed me, clearly exposing their faces on Facebook, attempts of confrontations explicitly demanding the viewing with the landlord by alleging to be potential tenants through third-party websites. Basically, the list can go on. Now, I've got probably over 30 items here that I could show as to what I've been subjected to. Now, I'm aware that some of the councillors in this meeting are friends and associates or even members of Acorn. And some of the councillors in this meeting have had similar experiences of people turning up outside their homes protesting. This behaviour was condemned then. Do you all, the councillors of my city, Paul Wood and Robert Johnson, whom I have also emailed on the 9th of March, of this, agree that Acorn's behaviour should be condemned? Now, Acorn failed to investigate the matter prior to marching to my home and failed to accept the DPS decision. Do you agree that they discriminate landlords and act as vigilantes? Do you think that the council should offer support for not only tenants but also landlords such as myself? I was labelled as one of the 50 rogue landlords in a recent protest outside the town hall by Acorn. Now, I think I've been particularly discriminated because of being Asian and also a lady. And I'd like to know what support you offer for landlords such as myself, and whether, obviously, this matter is acceptable. So I've got a few questions there.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Can I call upon councillor Paul Wood, Cabinet Member for Neighbours and Community Safety, to respond, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you, Zobia, for coming to council. Unfortunately, you're not going to be happy with the response I'm going to give you today, but I don't have any choice for this. Because the complaints involved a number of organisations, including the council, where there's ongoing matters which could have legal connotations, I've been advised by legal and governance that we can't pass comment on this at this stage. And I am sorry that I can't speak further on that, but I have to adapt to what I'm told by our legal people on this. So unfortunately, I can't pass any comment on this, Lord Mayor.
So do you condemn?
I can't pass any comment on it.
It can't, I'm sorry, the councillor can't comment on it. I will try and find out the reasons behind that, if you'll bear with us.
Lord Mayor, can I take some advice then? Because Zobia Rafik also emailed me, and I did respond to her. So I don't know, if you're taking legal advice, what advice is it to me as well then? Because I have actually responded, and I've been deeply concerned by what I've heard.
I will be happy to speak to councillor Chaffack privately after the meeting.
Okay. Yeah, any advice would be, yeah, okay. Okay, I'm sorry about that, Zobia, but we will try and get that sort of resolved for you. It's okay. No, you can't. You'll get a written response, Zobia. All right.
Right, okay.
I'll get your written response. Thank you. Please, can Zobia be returned to the public gallery? Please, can Justin Buxton be admitted to the virtual meeting room? Are you there, Justin? Are you there, Justin? Hello? Are you on mute?
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, Mr Buxton. Yeah, can you, we can't see you, but we can hear you. So would you like to ask your question, please?
I'll try and switch the video on.
Oh, that's better. Good to see you.
Sorry about that. Good afternoon, everyone. Right, I've got two questions. The first question is a yes or no question. Does the council's policy of ruling out public questions submitted to February's full council meeting on the 3rd of the 2nd, 21, demonstrate and prove that it is unnecessary for the questioner to be present at the council meetings, that would be both Cabinet and full council, for their questions and subsequent responses to be minuted and published? Second question, further to the entirely comprehensive archive-depository that the council has apparently promised its citizens, recording all information relating to the tree felling scandal in Sheffield. Please, could the council categorically confirm and rigorously ensure that all information and data captured by Amy pursuant to their legal obligation to clause 20.2.1 of the Streets Aid contract? Can they ensure that it will all be retained and included in the archive, over and above any separate data retention policy agreed between the council and Amy?
Thank you. May I call upon councillor Mark Jones, Cabinet Member for Environment and Street Seeing and Climate Change, to answer the first question, and then councillor Terry Fox, Cabinet Member for Finance, Resources and Governance, to answer the second question? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. All of the questions were put in reverse order. It's good to see you, Justin. I hope you're keeping well. I would hope that the archive does contain all the material. The question I've got has got 19.2.1, although in all fairness, I'm not sure of the content of even article 20.2.1 or 19.2.1. Where it is not commercially limited or in any way form ruled out for being shared publicly, I can see no reason why all information should come into that repository. It still remains my ambition that that repository becomes full and inclusive and serves as a historical archive. It's the council's desire to see this.
Can you guarantee that?
We can't, Mr Buxton, we can't ask questions across the floor. This is one question and you get an answer. And I'm afraid that's it. There isn't time to have a discussion across the floor. Thank you.
Sorry for clarity, not knowing the content of that clause and what it pertains to, I can't give a definitive answer right now. But if it is subject to public disclosure, it will go in the archive. I'll get written qualification on that. I've not received any written qualification on that at this stage, Mr Buxton, I'm afraid, so. And then I'll get that to you. Thank you.
Councillor Fox?
Thanks, Lord Mayor. And thanks, Mr Buxton, for your question. My understanding is if that you're not attending, but you put a public question in. That goes to the Cabinet Member, who then gives a written response. I'll take guidance on whether that then gets captured in the minutes. I'm not aware, but I will take guidance and let you know, Mr Buxton.
Thank you. Thank you. Can Mr Buxton please be turned to the virtual meeting room, virtual room, please? Thank you. The next questioner is Mark Smith. Unfortunately, Mr Smith is not here today, so we're going to get him a written answer to his question. The next question is from, please can Janet Riddler be admitted to the virtual meeting room? Is she there? I'm looking at her. Are you there, Janet? Hello? Are you there, Janet?
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, are you there? Would you like to ask your question, please, Janet?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. I note that there's been an earlier response to a petition about the recycling centres, but my question relates specifically to the Blackstock Road recycling centre. So I'm going to present it in the interest of the local residents of Gleedless Valley. So during the pandemic, capacity at the Gleedless Valley recycling centre has been greatly reduced whilst essential social distancing measures have been in place. However, demand for the recycling facility continues to grow and the resulting queues of traffic waiting to use the facility is now causing serious problems for local residents. Local buses have had to be diverted, and there's a real possibility of a serious road traffic accident happening on Blackstock Road. This is understandably causing great concern amongst local residents and frustration from people queuing to use the recycling centre who are being moved on. So I will be grateful if the Cabinet Member responsible for Environment, Street Seeing and Climate Change could please outline what is being done to resolve the problem of lack of capacity at the Blackstock Road Centre and to relieve the impact that this is having on local residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I call upon councillor Mark Jones, Cabinet Member for Environment and Street Seeing and Climate Change, to respond, please?
Thank you, Janet, for your question. It's good to see you. I hope you're keeping well. You're quite right that during the pandemic, we have seen a slight movement in terms of usage of our HWRCs. Longley Avenue used to be the one that received the greatest number of visits. Over the pandemic, that moved to Blackstock, whether that is because more people are at home doing more gardening or creating more waste. The south-east side of our city is heavily populated, and Blackstock is a very small site that serves a very large proportion of our city. So much more does need to be done. And you're absolutely right to highlight the issues that we faced around the traffic management outside that site. It's a long curving road with multiple crossing points on it, and it's not easy to get across while cars are queuing there. And yes, it is a bus route, and cancelling bus routes disenfranchised as the local residents on Gleedless Valley from being able to get around the city. So we do have to take measures. And regrettably, some of those measures have been trying to encourage drivers to come back later and to not queue on the main road because it is a detriment, it is a hazard to users. So as you heard earlier in the answer given to the petition, Blackstock's hours are being extended. It was our intention, the council's intention, to extend those hours to cover seven days rather than the six days that previously were. And it is felt that the increased hours in the evening times, eight o'clock, will help spread the burden. We will have to monitor this, however, going forward, because it could be that by increasing the hours to eight o'clock, all we're doing is increasing the torment of residents on Gleedless Valley. So that's one of the reasons why the council has been exploring bringing in online additional sites, working with our third-party providers. And that's why we're trialling, why the council is trialling the pop-up sites that I spoke of earlier, where we can encourage people to use other ways of disposing of their rubbish, we will try. By increasing the access to the other four sites across our city for as many hours as possible, we hope to be able to encourage people to use those sites instead of Blackstock. Bayton is also heavily used at the moment. There is more scope and capacity at Bayton, and it is hoped that by being able to reduce the social distancing requirements at our sites, the more people will be able to get onto the sites quickly and then leave the sites quickly. But we will have to monitor that. If at any state we feel that the road traffic conditions become unsustainable, I'll take on advice from the police. I feel it would be appropriate that we would close those sites at those times. But we will monitor the situation as best we can, and we will bring forward any and all possible alternatives as we can, as quickly as we can as well. So thank you for your question, Janet, and I hope you keep well.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Janet, for your question. Can Janet Riddler please be returned to the public gallery? And can Russell Johnson please be admitted to the virtual meeting room? Sorry? Oh, yes. What now? Yeah, yeah. Are you there? Just before Russell, just before I invite Russell to speak, we have now passed the hour for public questions. I've got Russell Johnson to speak and another guy, Ollie, is it Ollie Johnson? I'm suggesting that we might continue with this and take those other two questions before we move on. Is that agreed? Is that agreed? I'll take silence as affirmation. Yeah, okay, thank you. Are you there, Russell? Russell Johnson? Is she there? Hello, Russell? Are you there, Russell? I am mute. Can't now hear you. Can you see us?
Lord Mayor, he's there, but I'm not sure he can hear us.
Right.
Hi, Mr Johnson, can you hear us?
Can you speak, Mr Johnson? Can we hear you then?
You're on mute now, Mr Johnson.
Sorry, I've been messing around.
You're there. Hello, Russell. Would you like to ask your question, please?
Yes, I don't know quite what happened there. Anyway, thank you for being patient. Good afternoon, Lord Mayor, council and officers. Okay, I'll be fairly brief. Three questions. The first one's a little longer than the other two. Firstly, in the context of the Liverpool City Council scandal, which was triggered in part by an investigation into best value, is Sheffield City Council confident that the destruction of public assets with an estimated caveat value of £30 million during the tree felling fiasco does not constitute a breach of the legal requirement placed on the council to secure best value in its actions or in the actions undertaken on its behalf? Furthermore, is the council aware that the charade known as the independent tree panel, which was undoubtedly a sham consultation and cost £132,000, itself may well be deemed unlawful, should there be a Liverpool-style investigation here? Now, in this case, because it's a technical legal matter, it's clear that an elected member's answer should be supported by a named senior legally qualified person. Clearly, the view of a layperson on such a matter would not carry any credibility. Should this be unavailable now, and I understand there may be an issue in providing that legally-supported answer immediately, please would you assure me that a proper written answer will be provided within a reasonable time period and that this will form part of the public record? That's question one, thank you. Question two. Please would the leader or deputy leader explain the council's alarmingly dismal performance in complying with its legal obligations to provide the public with responses to freedom of information and subject access requests in a timely manner? Long delays are being experienced, even where the work is required is minimal, and even where the Information Commissioner has expressed concern about the council's performance in this area. Members should note that the reason for this systemic obstruction, where sometimes given, is not pandemic or staffing capacity related. Indeed, mostly reasons are not given. Is councillor Johnson aware that this pattern is building suspicion that the council is seeking to hide incriminating information? And would he not prefer that further reputational damage to the organisation he leads and indeed his party is avoided by demonstrating transparency, honesty and conscientious compliance with legal obligations? That's question two. Question three. Please would councillor Johnson or deputy leader, on behalf of the cabinet, distance himself from scurrilous tweets made in the last week by a backbench Labour councillor, whom I believe I'm not allowed to name, but people here will know who this is, which sought to dishonestly suggest that the It's Our City community group is in fact a front for a political party? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Johnson. Some of those questions were a little bit near to the knuckle, but anyway, I want to call upon councillor Mark Jones, cabinet member for Environment and Streets, to answer. And also, in the absence of councillor Johnson this afternoon, would councillor Terry Fox like to answer some of those questions as well? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and good to see you, Mr Johnson. I hope you're keeping well. I've not got an answer for you from the legal department, so I will seek one and get that to you in a timely, as timely a manner as I can. I'm not sure whether there's going to be any delays in getting that response to you, but I'll try and get that done as quickly as possible, and I hope that's acceptable.
Just for clarification, Mark, which question were you responding to there?
The first one about the tree caveat value and, well, the entire, I've lost Mr Johnson.
I'm here now.
No, sorry, yeah, the screen just moved. The full content of question one, which is directed towards me, covering the Liverpool element, the tree bit.
It's not really directed towards you, Mark.
It's not a two-way thing, Mr Johnson. Councillor Jones, can you give Mr Johnson the answer he's looking for?
I'll get him a written answer. Yes, I'll get him a written answer, yes.
Okay, sorry, Mr Johnson, is that okay? Councillor Fox, can you comment on this one, on the next question, please?
Thanks, Lord Mayor, and thanks, Mr Johnson. I can briefly comment on the FOI, Lord Mayor, but I will get Mr Johnson a written response. But on the FOI, a councillor asked me a question on the members' questions, and so within that, there is a public record on the FOI stuff. So with the members' questions and my answers are already in that, so I can get that out to Mr Johnson. Regarding the tweet, I'm not on social media, but I will take good licence, and again, myself or the leader will get a response to Mr Johnson. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr Johnson, for bringing your questions. Can Russell Johnson please be returned to the public gallery? And please can Ollie Johnson be admitted to the virtual meeting room? Is he there?
Hello.
Hello, Ollie. Can you ask your question, please?
Hello. Yeah, hopefully everyone can hear me. Good afternoon, and thanks for having me, Lord Mayor. So my question relates to play streets. Play streets are part of a national resident-led initiative. They involve temporary street closures once per week or once per month to encourage children's play and sport, to build community cohesion and to support active travel. This has been supported nationally with guidance from the Department for Transport to support the process of putting them in place, and it's been widely taken up by councils across the UK. So my question is, will the council put a temporary play street policy into place as part of its Covid recovery strategy to make it easier for residents to apply for regular play streets? And will the council show citywide support for this initiative?
Thank you, Mr Johnson. Can I call upon councillor Julie Grok, cabinet member for Transport and Development, to respond, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Good afternoon, Mr Johnson. Many thanks for your interest and support of the play streets and for bringing this question to council this afternoon. It sounds like you and your neighbours have really benefited from keeping active with your dancing in driveways and building a sense of community at social distance, which is really great to hear. I can confirm that we are supportive of play streets initiative, and you may have seen on the Playing Out website that Sheffield City Council is confirmed as an active area on the local authority directory. The link on the playingout.net website takes you to the street party licence page on our website. This is an application form that people interested in temporary road closures for a street party can complete, and the same form should be used for people interested in play streets. As a result of what you've said, I've asked officers to ensure that our website makes it clearer that the application process also applies to the play streets and provides useful links and other information that may be of interest to you. Thank you, Mr Johnson.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr Johnson, for bringing your question. I've had a request on the chat to move item nine up the agenda, being as those people listening would want to, and it's a subject of great discussion. Do I have a mover for that?
Lord Mayor?
Just a minute. Councillor Sue Auckland?
Lord Mayor, I think I've already moved it, but I think you didn't hear me, I'm sorry.
Okay. A seconder? Do you have a seconder?
I will second that.
Right, okay. Who's calling?
Yeah, I mean, it is a very important issue, and these people have come along today and asked very relevant and important questions, and I think that we feel that it is something that could be moved up the agenda. But we would expect then that the current item six, which is about public sector pay, that that would be moved back to replace where the cladding motion was. So we would expect that item six and nine be swapped around, be exchanged one for the other, and we are happy for that to happen.
Okay. Do we have another, anyone from the Greens Party want to say anything on it?
I just support what Sue just said, we were going to say that too.
So move item eight up, move item six to item eight, is that what you're saying?
I don't think we'd object to that, Lord Mayor, in the interest of brevity.
Okay, okay then. So we're going to move on to item, oh. Yeah, can I see who wants to do this? And I'll take silence as affirmation of the meeting, yeah? Right, okay.
Lord Mayor?
Yes, Peter, who was it, Peter Garbutt? Yeah?
Can I confirm that that is swapping item nine for item six?
Yes, I said item eight, didn't I? Item nine for item six, yes, that's right. Yeah. So I'm just going to find item nine, what page do we, oh, it's here. Right, okay. So what we'll do now, we'll do this item and then I'll try and get a break in because of the people that's here, okay. Item nine is notice of motion regarding demanding an end to the national cladding scandal. There is a maximum time limit of 25 minutes for this item. May I call upon councillor Paul Wood to move the motion?
Great, we speak, Lord Mayor, we've missed out item five.
Yes, I'll have to go back to that after, yeah, because the reason we're doing this, councillor Baker, is because of people here that are wanting to listen to this debate. Okay, thank you. May I call on councillor Paul Wood to move the motion? You may speak for up to three minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Your home is probably the most important investment we ever make in our lives. It has the basis of giving us security and should be one of the happiest moments we ever encourages to get our first home. Thousands of people, not only in Sheffield but across the country, have been hit by the scandal that's developed following Grenfell. When removing the cladding heightened the massive problems which many of these properties have. Our home and building is our security for the future, and we owe it to all of our residents to give the maximum support we can as a council to supporting the issues they're now facing. What has become a safe, secure home to many has become a living nightmare. The bills that they are being asked to pay is anything between £20,000 and £150,000 in remedial costs, and as was mentioned earlier, a lot of young couples who've bought these homes as leaseholders would never be able to afford to pay these bills. For years, the deregulation of building control has been a key factor that's led to some of these problems. And one of the most important things we need to ensure going forward for the future is that we all campaign for more political parties to get some control back on the building standards and control that's built in our city. The reduced inspections has left leaseholders in a most horrific situation. They have little or no protection currently, and the appalling fire and safety measures being uncovered is a direct result of the lack of this government regulation. Building inspections, in my opinion, and our group's opinion, should be finally done by the local authority. They should not be left to firms in London and Manchester who can just go ahead and give the approval of these buildings from submitting emails and CDs. We find that totally outrageous. We fully support the ten aims of the Sheffield Cladding Action Group, and we'll work tirelessly within this council, hopefully with all parties and with that action group, to have a strong voice to government, press what we feel should be essential in this. The support of those ten principles will lead, if accepted, to some resolution towards this.
Thank you, councillor Wood.
Okay, thank you, Lord Mayor.
Can I call upon councillor Jim Steinke to second the motion? You may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I'll be very quick. If you don't take housing seriously, if you don't take safety seriously, this is what ends up now. Clearly, Grenfell was truly shocking, and that's slowly working its way through. I think that the way the local authority responded to it at the time was exemplary. I'd like to pay tribute to my previous cabinet member, Jane Dunleavy, in terms of the immediate action that was taken by her and other officers in terms of when Hanover block was identified as having problems, and that that has now kind of resolved itself. Walking past it the other day, it's wonderful to see it back to how it was, even better. But in terms of the kind of private sector housing, it's crucial that we move on that. Paul has outlined what the commitment to the local authority, I'd also like to pay tribute to the work that Paul Blomfield, who's our local MP for the Sheffield Central, has been doing, where most of the blocks are actually identified. And we really need to take, all governments, all local authorities need to take housing and housing safety more seriously for the future. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. There is one proposed amendment, and this is number eight on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. May I call upon councillor Martin Phipps to move the amendment number eight? You may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Firstly, I would like to welcome this motion and express our full support as a group for the Endos cladding scandal and their ten steps and the Cladding Action Group campaigns. This scandal continues to unfold since the tragic death of 72 people who lived in Grenfell Tower. The situation is completely unacceptable. People bought flats with the understanding that they had passed fire regulations, that they are safe to live in, and yet they are now the ones being presented the bills for shoddy construction and poor fire regulations. This is the fault of the government and developers. Leaseholders are in no way at fault for the poor construction. Government support falls far short from what is required, and there is no support for other major fire safety issues like compartmentation, which leaseholders are still being charged for. Being told the place you live in is not safe is traumatic enough, but to then be charged such large amounts that has driven people to declare bankruptcy for the poor construction of them is obscene. It should come as no surprise in a survey done by Dr Martin of the UK Cladding Action Group that it found that nine in 10 of those affected by the crisis have said their mental health has deteriorated. In our amendment, we are calling for the council to work with partners and those affected to enable additional mental health support for those affected. As Jenny Garrett from Wickariverside requested earlier, in our amendment, we are also calling for developers to be queried over whether they have existing developments of outstanding serious fire safety issues. This is something we can do as a council and something you and council has already passed. I urge all parties to support this as a material step we can take. I hope everyone will vote for our amendment and for the substantive, we as a council must do everything. and for the substantive. We as a council must do everything we can to support those affected. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. We're now going to move to the debate on the matter. Sorry. I've got it. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. I forgot the seconder. Can I ask Calton Rivers to second the amendment, please?
Okay, Lord Mayor. First, can I say, Lord Mayor, thank you for holding these meetings. And I wish you all the best in your next endeavours. It's really difficult to talk about cladding when you know lives, the many lives that have been lost in Grenfell Tower. I was going to read a poem from a firefighter who is still going through the mental illness that he, he received from trying to support people. We've seen this, we've seen videos, we've seen cameras, we've seen families losing each other. We don't want to lose anymore. Listening to the people who came here today only makes us think that we are not doing enough. And I believe we're not doing enough. And for me, more relatively in Sheffield, we know that the Hanover Tower acted very quickly, the council acted very quickly. But what we learned and the lessons we learned were communication breakdown, transparency, accountability. We know that councillor Wood, myself and Angela, councillor Jesse have been working together in building the relationships of those who live in that block of flats. What we need to do is we need to work together to make sure that this never ever happens. And we never ever lose families, young people who saved their money to buy their first flats. Lord Mayor, our amendment is just to add high, to add more power to the, to the motion in hand. And I hope that we vote for this. And we think about the people of our city. And we think about each other and the work that we do, which is very valuable. And we, I hope we listen. I hope we listen to each other and hope we listen to our residents. On that note, I second the amendment, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Just in time, that. Right, I'm now going to, I'm now going to move to the debate on the matter. Can I call upon councillor Andrew Sengar? You have two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Grenfell was a terrible tragedy that many of us hoped we would, we would never see. It sort of shocked the whole building industry and councils up and down the country. We took a cross-party approach when it happened to quickly identify what needed to be done on high-rise buildings in Sheffield and South Yorkshire. And, and with that spirit, I mean, I support the, I support both the, the motion and the, and the amendment. We need a cross-party solution. Clearly, the very dangerous ACM cladding has been removed. And the government has now come up with a proper scheme in terms of buildings over 18 metres. But as, as we've heard from the, the leaseholders' action group today, there's still lots of problems in terms of funding, and particularly for, you know, for the buildings 11 to 18 metres. So a lot more work is done. We've had more than 20 years of, of deregulation by governments of all stripes. And we need to find a way of getting back to building regulations where the local authority and the, and the local fire authority are involved. So, 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 Lord Mayor, let's have a, have a cross-party, put a cross-party approach to this. We need to support the leaseholders in their challenge. It's terrible that people are, are being priced out of their house and being, but it's equally terrible that buildings have been built without proper regulations. So let's get proper regulations in at a national level for local authorities and fire authorities. And let's get the government's support properties all the way 11 metres and above. As I say, the only clause we struggle with is paragraph P, because we, in the green amendments, we don't think it's, it's quite in keeping with the, the modern way the council's going, going to be working. But clearly, there's a fire authority approach to this as well as the building regulations. But, but Lord Mayor, the key, the key thing is let's, let's keep, keep, get these buildings safe for everybody. And let's get the money sorted from government. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Sengar. Councillor Jane Dunn, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor. There can't be anyone here today who hasn't got the images of Grenfell on the 14th of June 2017 etched into their memory for life. I have another one, June 19, 2017. I remember the day clearly, it was actually my birthday. But because I was cabinet lead, I'd organised to visit tenants and residents in our tower blocks across the city. One conversation from that evening has haunted me ever since. It was with a young woman cradling a newborn baby. In the background, she had the news on the image of a smouldering Grenfell Tower was seen. She broke down in tears, scared, petrified. Here was a new mum who didn't know if she was putting her baby to sleep in a home that was safe. And who could blame her? Our response was swift and applauded. But for the leaseholders and residents in the 130 blocks across our city, that fear is with them every day and every night. Something the residents of Wicker Riverside know only too well when they were forced to evacuate last Christmas. For four years, they had been trapped in an unsafe home, trapped by rising insurance, trapped by spiral indebt, and trapped by a government that has failed to protect them, failed to make those that caused the crisis pay. Those that installed the dangerous cladding and inadequate fire stopping measures, leaseholders are not the ones that caused this crisis. They must not be the ones made to borrow money to fix government failure. It's a scandal and morally wrong. The irony of the government's message of stay home, save lives the past year cannot be lost on these residents, a government that has failed them catastrophically. How do they sleep at night, knowing that so many can't? They need to step up and pay up and put things right and give the council the money to fund this. I would like to also add my full support to the Sheffield Cladding Group. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dunn. Councillor Douglas Johnson, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I appreciate that the issues of cladding and the scandal behind it is one for national government to step up to. And I think we all support the request for them to step up. We fully support the action of the cladding groups, as much as we've heard from today. We now know that across the building industry, there was, there were problems where the whole sector was rife with shortcuts. And that's underpinned by a wholesale lack of regulation. And so that's where we are today. I have to note that, of course, this council is not completely off the hook. And councillor Rivers and councillor Stankin have both mentioned Hanover Tower. Quite right, that was a serious worry. That, of course, came about because this council installs cladding that was combustible after having consulted tenants on solid aluminium that was safe and, and installing a different material. And we also know, of course, that for the cladding groups, openness and honesty is fundamental. And we now know that the council holds information on a number of the blocks where people live, in the city centre in particular. And that information is being kept secret within the council on the basis of protecting the commercial interests of property developers and the building owners and not being disclosed to the residents of those buildings. And that is a concern. As councillor Stankin said, and I think is quite right, if we, if we, if we don't talk seriously about housing, we're not talking seriously about safety. And that's the bottom line here, that we are talking about the safety and wellbeing of a large number of residents in our city. And that's why we're supporting the notion that there should be more resource put by the council into the, the mental health counselling needs of many, many of those residents. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Mohammed Marouf, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I wasn't actually going to speak on this, since I've got nothing ready prepared. But I'm not only speaking as a councillor here today, I'm also a chartered surveyor. And I have a great deal of sympathy with the leaseholders of their petition today. And I was nodding all the way through when they were going through their concerns. These people bought these properties in, in good faith. And, and as investments for the future. But many of them now, Lord Mayor, unfortunately, are looking at negative equity in their properties. These properties in the short term are actually blighted because they're unmortgageable. So the immediate problem that people have got, which I have a huge amount of sympathy with, and something needs to be done about this immediately, is the fact that these people are sitting on these properties, that they can't actually sell until somebody sorts this issue out. And it needs to be sorted out as quickly as we possibly can. Because I'm coming across this quite a bit across the board. And I can talk about leasehold situations for hours and hours here. And I don't intend to, because you want to give me two minutes here. But there are, there are a lot of issues around how these leases were actually drafted, how they were actually conveyed, and what responsibilities it actually puts on the leaseholders. And I can, and I can, I can definitely sympathise with them, because they wouldn't have read all the title, the, all the deeds and, and leases that were actually being signed by them. So they have an immediate, immediate problem, which is they are sitting on properties which are definitely, definitely, in my opinion, blighted at the moment. And that is, that was exacerbated by the fact that a lot of these properties were created through developments, which using poor materials, poor, poor design. And in some cases, there were people who were approving these, these high-rise blocks. And dare I say it, I mean, there are other private blocks in, in the city as well, where, where you've seen cladding falling off because of the way they've, they've been put up. So the quality of these products.
Sorry, your time's up. I miscounted that one.
Sorry. You say they should have stopped now?
Yes, please, if you would.
Sorry, Lord Mayor. Carry on.
Thank you, Marouf. Councillor Dams, did you indicate to speak? I saw you raise your hand.
I did. I'm having trouble with the chat function, Lord Mayor.
Go on then.
One of the main problems with the Riverside block was it was inspected by an independent, independent inspector, chosen by the developer. And I think that's got to stop. It needs to be a completely independent inspector that's appointed by somebody else, but not the developer. I think that's one thing we need to sort out. And I think if you would have, if you would have talked about this before, that you were going to have an instant where the perpetrator of the problem gets off scot-free and the victims have to pay for it. That's got to be wrong on any sort of level. I was lucky, I suppose, that in my role with the fire authority, I went to Grenfell to the vigil and talking to people there. I thought it was appalling before, and I can't tell you what, you know, the, the tragedy that people were telling us. But I think what we need to do really is not to look for scapegoats, but to look for a solution and keep a close track on the, the government's building safety bill that's going to start going through parliament. And I think this is something that genuinely, genuinely unites all of us. And we will be supporting the green amendment with the exception of Q. But the, the main body of it and the thrust of it, we totally agree with, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Penny Baker, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I want to start by thanking the action group for all the work they've done and all the pressure that, what they're doing. Really support their 10 steps. I also, Lord Mayor, want to thank the then cabinet member of housing and the officers who worked with her when we had this issue that came into Sheffield suddenly. I was actually on holiday in Scotland. But because I had multi-story flats in my ward, I got a phone call and I will forever appreciate that. I know they went way out of their way immediately without thinking about anything other than the tenants. And that's, we can't ask for more than that from our councillors and staff. So I really need to say that. Going forward, we need to protect our tenants, leaseholders and owners from bad builders and bad building techniques. And as others have said, we need to work hard to make sure that all inspections are independent. And then as they revisit building regulations, that those building regulations are fit for purpose in the time in which we live and not working back as to what people thought they were 20 years ago. It's really important that we keep up to date with current knowledge and current information. So we support this, Lord Mayor. Thank you again to the people who are doing all the campaigning. We do support you. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I've just got time for one more speaker, and then I'm going to give the right to reply. And that, that speaker is Adam Hurst.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm going to be very quick, because I think really, there's not that much that's contentious on this. I hope this isn't too much levity, but I
can hear you very well, Adam Hurst.
I remember as a child, you know, being told that things were safe as houses and get onto the property ladder. But I think the really fundamental point that comes out on all this is everybody has a right to know that when they move into a house, be it rented or owned or leased or freehold, it has been built to a proper and safe standard. And we also know there's some level of independence. And I'm a great believer, the local authorities and the building inspection departments really contributed to putting a proper unbiased view on building quality standards without being affected by commercial considerations was essential. So obviously, I just think in every way, I think we're wanting to encourage people to buy when they can afford it. We want people to be living, you know, in, living in housing in areas that they would choose to live in. And surely, one of the fundamentals of that is that on everything else we buy, we have a right to expect that it's been built to an adequate and safe standard. And clearly, there has been a failure in housing over the last 20 years to do this. So I just support the, the motion before the council. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Where are we? Now, I'm going to give the right to reply, please, to the mover, councillor Paul Wood.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you for everyone who's contributed to this debate. Councillor Stankin quite rightly recognised the work that councillor Dunn did as cabinet member with the officers in dealing with our social housing stock. Councillor Sanger, I fully agree with everything he has said. The financial resolution, we need to press the government for. And I'm pleased that collectively, we will go forward doing that. Councillor Johnson raised about information being devolved. We will devolve any information whatsoever that we can. But it has to clear all of the legal process to do that. We can't put the council at risk by taking steps that we don't have fully cleared with the legal process. Councillor Marouf is 100% one of my biggest concerns. These properties are unmortgageable. And even if people are in a mess in them, they can't sell them to get out of that mess. Councillor Dams, I absolutely agree with that locally, we as a council should have far more control of everything built in our, our city. And finally, I'd just like to say that in the government safety bill that's going through, we have, through my portfolio, put an amendment into that bill, through Lord Greenough, which is referred to Robert Jenrick, that no one would be able to move into any block built without local authority having the final inspection and approval. He supported that proposition and he's referred that through to Robert Jenrick. So that would help on buildings in the future. But as councillor Sanger quite rightly said, we need a massive cash injection to deal with the buildings that have been built previously to that. I thank every member of the council for supporting this.
Thank you, councillor Wood. Thank you very much. Right, it appears, I'm going to move to the vote on the amendment number eight, moved by councillor Martin Phipps.
Lord Mayor, voting in parts, Lord Mayor.
Yes.
Lord Mayor, voting in parts as well.
Wait a minute, let's get one at a time. Yeah.
In voting for the amendment, we are voting against two Q.
Who else was that?
That was Lord Mayor.
Councillor Auckland, yeah?
Yeah. In voting for the amendment, we're voting against paragraph P.
Right. So I will take silence with those, with those, what you've just pointed out. I'll take silence affirmation of the meeting. If any member wishes dissent, please unmute and speak. Right.
We're having a break.
I'd have voted substantive before that.
So I'll just confirm, that is carried with the exception of paragraph Q. Is that right? Okay. 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 Thank you. I'm now, I'm. What's next?
Substantive, substantive, Lord Mayor. The vote is substantive.
Substantive is agreed. No, wait a minute, we're going on the, I've lost my place here. Wait a minute. Wrong page. Excuse me, folks. I'll be with you in a second. Where are we? Page? Right. I'm now going to move to the vote on the substantive motion. And. And the original motion as amended, but not paragraph Q. Yes? I will take, I will take silence as affirmation of the meeting. Any member wish to speak? Um, dissent? Unmute and speak. Okay? Right. So, so that the substantive motion is carried. Okay? Yes, I'm now going to, I'm now going to take a break for, let's have a look, what time is it? It's 4:15. Shall we reconvene at 4:25, please? And if you would kindly just mute your, and turn your cameras off, because people will still be able to hear because it's going live. Okay? Thank you. So, so that the substantive motion is carried. Okay? Yes, I'm now going to, I'm now going to take a break for, let's have a look, what time is it? It's 4:15. Shall we reconvene at 4:25, please? And if you would kindly just unmute your, and turn your cameras off, because people will still be able to hear because it's going live. Okay? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Marouf.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's just a point of clarification on my non-disclosure agreement question. Councillor Johnson has very kindly answered it on behalf of businesses. My question was more aimed at non-disclosure agreements between offices and the, and the local authority. So that was an anticipated one for next time, but well judged there, councillor Johnson. You picked my next question up, but the question here was how many non-disclosure agreements we've had with employees in the last two years?
Yeah, unfortunately councillor Marouf, it caused me some, it caused me a bit of confusion as to what type of NDAs you were going for. So I.
You should have just run me.
I've answered your next month's question this month.
Thank you.
By all, by all means, by all means, bring your next question to, to, to next full.
Thank you. But you have anticipated my future questions, so that's.
I will have a response for you. Thank you, councillor.
Thank you.
Anything else? Page five? Page six?
Sorry, Lord Mayor. Yes, on page five. Question for councillor Johnson. So again, thank you councillor Johnson for answering that question. And the thing is that you've described the reasons for doing the, the pilots. But my question was really about the criteria used to select those four areas. And you quite correctly pointed out that those are smaller areas within. non-disclosure agreements between offices and the local authority. So that was an anticipated one for next time, but well judged there councillor Johnson, you picked my next question up. But the question here was how many non-disclosure agreements we've had with employees in the last two years?
Yeah, unfortunately councillor Marouf, it caused me some, it caused me a bit of confusion as to what type of NDAs you were going for. So I've answered your next month's question this month, so by all means, by all means, bring your next question to next full.
Thank you, but you have anticipated my future questions, so that's good.
I will have a response for you. Thank you councillor.
Thank you.
Anything else? Page five?
Sorry, Lord Mayor, yes, on page five, question for councillor Johnson. So again, thank you councillor Johnson for answering that question and the thing is that you've described the reasons for doing the pilots. But my question was really about the criteria used to select those four areas, and you quite correctly pointed out that those are smaller areas within wards, not the whole of the wards. But the fact remains that they are all four areas where it's been selected to deploy council resources, and they all happen to be areas where it's well known that there are election hotspots and marginal wards where Labour councils could lose their seats this election coming up. And I just wanted to ask, what is the reason for selecting those particular areas? And I noticed it was not done by officers. Officers' report was very conscious to state unusually that it was you councillor Jones, councillor Lee and councillor Wood who specially selected those areas. So I just wondered if there's some objective reason for that or any other reason?
Councillor Johnson, you're straying into politics. We're in an area of purp. I mean, I don't know whether.
Well, we are straying into politics.
Yeah, well, you are straying into politics, and I think you've been warned that this meeting, that we have to keep away from that. What I will say councillor Johnson is you've criticised local area communities first, now you're coming back and saying that we shouldn't be spending on safer, cleaner and greener areas. That information has come from consultation and discussions that we have regularly with our residents. But thank you for your question councillor Johnson.
Thanks. I was just, I was just calling out the fact that there seems to be a lot of resources of the council being deployed in those areas. But yeah, thanks for your answer. That's very illuminating.
And I'm sure councillor Johnson, those residents will be grateful for those interventions within those areas. So I'm glad you can join with us in thanking us for bringing that forward. Thank you.
I know it's difficult guys and ladies, but please do not try to strain to politics if you possibly can. Thank you. It's not allowed. Any more on? Page six? Page nine?
Please, Lord Mayor.
Yeah.
Yes, question three A, please, Lord Mayor. And thank you for your answer councillor Rick Bell. Can I just start by saying my heart goes out to the employees and partners at John Lewis? Going through a consultation process about a potential site closure. I've been through that a couple of times myself, and it's horrible. So my heart really does go out to them. But with respect to question three A, last August, you announced a deal that secured John Lewis in the city and said that the store would remain open. And as part of that deal, the council gave John Lewis £3 million. Just a simple question, was that investment of £3 million conditional on the store remaining open?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I also begin by apologising? I was late to the council meeting, so apologies there. And I agree with you councillor Smith, it's heartbreaking to see so many job losses. The information through you, Lord Mayor, is out there regarding each stage and the discussions we've had. It's gone through the cabinet process and I've been to scrutiny a number of times. The £3 million, Lord Mayor, and I know our officers and the chief executive have made statements regarding this £3 million. And as it says in the cabinet report and the statements we've issued, the £3 million, Lord Mayor, is, we've been quite clear. It was independently assessed. John Lewis was in a current lease for a number of years. For them to enter out of that lease and for us to get the freehold, so that the discussions and negotiations that happened was that they would surrender the current lease, which was independently valued and so forth, and then they would transition into the new lease which they have signed. So the £3 million enabled us to get the freehold. So now we own the site and the building. So that's what the £3 million paid for, Lord Mayor. Thank you. Any more councillor Smith, you're on mute.
I do apologise for my, yeah, question three B. Thank you for your answer councillor Rick Bell. It sounds pretty obvious that there was no clause in that £3 million deal, if I can describe it as that, that made it conditional.
Can you, can you, yeah, you can only ask one.
I'm asking. So it's three B, Lord Mayor.
Three B, right, okay.
So it's obvious that there was no clause making it conditional that the store would remain open. Because of that, we're now facing quite a lengthy and expensive legal process. Can you enlighten us some more as to why the council forgot to put such a clause into that contract?
Lord Mayor, I thought I'd answered the question. I have provided a written response. And if councillor Smith wants to ask a supplementary for three B, as he indicated, through you, Lord Mayor, if you want to give him another opportunity, I think I've answered three A. So if he wants to ask me through you, Lord Mayor, a supplementary on three B, more than happy to do that through you, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
With respect, Lord Mayor, that was a question on three B, but I think we know what the situation is. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
If I can just come back, Lord Mayor, just to clarify the point. It's been well documented, it's in a cabinet report, so we've been open and transparent. Occasionally councillor Smith also tells me that he's a severe as well. So I'll put it as simple as I can, Lord Mayor. We entered into negotiations with John Lewis for them to surrender the lease. That was in negotiations. That was independently valued, and that's where the figure of £3 million came from. So they surrendered the lease, and as part of those negotiations was to enter into a new lease, and that's the new lease that they have signed. And they signed that lease in good intentions. That's what we thought they would remain here in Sheffield. I mean, the backdrop to that is, Lord Mayor, the previous leader, the previous cabinet member, myself and the current leader, this is a saga that's been going on for almost 10 years. I think this council has gone beyond to try and keep John Lewis in the city, but they've taken that decision. And as the statement has also said, Lord Mayor, there'll be no financial loss to the council. I mean, they only told us last week that they are no longer reopening the store. So now our solicitors and John Lewis solicitors will get into negotiations regarding the current lease. I hope that answers the question, Lord Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. Page 10? Page 11?
Yes, Lord Mayor. So just on page 11. So on question one, and actually councillor Rick Bell, I just want if you can clarify one thing. You said just a moment ago in response to the previous question that the council had bought the freehold. But then later you said that John Lewis had surrendered the lease. So I just wonder if you can clarify that, as I understand, that's not quite right, is it? The council owns the freehold all along, didn't it? And this was a surrender and re-grant situation. Can you just clarify that? The council hasn't bought anything, has it?
No, there was a lease councillor. Lord Mayor, I'll wait till councillor Johnson finishes, then I'll come in.
That's fine. I was just clarifying that what we're being told is true. So my other question is on question three.
Lord Mayor, could I come back and respond, please?
It's okay.
He's asked a question, Lord Mayor. I'd like to respond if I can, please. Let him respond councillor Johnson.
If he wants to make a bit more of a speech.
Yeah, more than happy to provide as I've offered throughout, Lord Mayor, that myself and officers are prepared to provide briefing so councillors don't have to wait for full council to ask these questions. Now, John Lewis were in a lease. I think it's about 40 years that were remaining. So while they're in that building with that lease, they're there. Now, for them to surrender that lease, to enter into a new negotiation, they had to surrender that term. To surrender that term, there's a cost. That cost was £3 million, which releases them from that lease, which then comes back to the council. So they no longer have a lease. And then the second lease is signed. So hopefully that clarifies the point. So there was a lease, they surrendered that lease, this was a cost. We now own the building and the site. They then entered into another negotiation for a new lease, which they now have told us that they no longer want. They no longer want to stay in Sheffield. So as I've said, both solicitors will now get into discussions and see what happens from there.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. That's surrender and re-grants, which is what happens on commercial leases. On question two then, so does that mean that in effect, in short, the council paid £3 million in exchange for a lease that's easier for John Lewis to get out of?
It was a negotiation between both parties, Lord Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And question three was about, I had a question about this £21 million. Now, I know you said that you'd been open and honest about the payments made to John Lewis, but I just wanted to ask about this, because you're saying, in your written answer, you're saying there's no committed sum of £21 million. But in the documents I see from the council, against the heading of John Lewis partnership and £21 million, it says newly centred refurbishment programme to be agreed. Now, I appreciate that that money presumably hasn't been paid over, because I think you said that the refurbishment money would only be paid over once the refurbishment's been done, and obviously it hasn't been done. So well, I just want to cover that £21 million that, when you say it's not been committed, as I understand, I think the council has put that money aside in anticipation that if John Lewis would stay open, that £21 million would be paid over. And what I really want to ask is, if that £21 million is there, is now not going to be paid to John Lewis, because they're packing up shop and leaving Sheffield, will you make that money available for other independent businesses that could probably really do with it in Sheffield?
Lord Mayor, as it says in my response, there is no commitment of £21 million. So I don't know where you've got the figure from. Regarding the refurbishment cost that the council was due to allocate to this project, the refurbishment isn't going to happen, so there's no cost there whatsoever to the council, because they are no longer going to be here in the city. Regarding the second point, the resources that were allocated to John Lewis, the heart of the city has got a red line boundary, and again, more than happy councillor Johnson to get you a full briefing. I'll ask Naline to get in touch, because I think it's important that you understand the project. The financing deal, the tax increment finance and the borrowing we're doing, that is only for the heart of the city too. I cannot, or the council cannot spend that money outside that red line. I would love to make that money available. I mean, I'd be knocking on the government's door, as you are aware of, to support businesses. I mean, they've made another raft of funding available. We know, I know, speaking to businesses this afternoon, the government hasn't gone far enough. You'll have heard the announcement, the £2 million. This administration is committed to supporting the reopening and supporting of not just the city centre, but high streets and district centres across the city. So I'd urge businesses to get involved and apply for that funding. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Okay, so my final question on that is, so thank you for that explanation. But with this £21 million, I'm still not clear where it's come from or where it's going to. But if it's not being spent on John Lewis, then is it going to be added to that £2 million fund for independent businesses?
Sorry, I probably didn't make myself clear the first time. The borrowing that has been, that the council is undertaking is for each block. So we assess each block, then make a, officers make a recommendation, and then we spend the resources. The money that's been ring fenced for Heart of the City Two project cannot be spent elsewhere. I would love that money to be spent somewhere else. But this afternoon, we met with Leah's Yard, the tenants there. You'll have read the press release, hopefully councillor Johnson, that is independence. Two business, local independent businesses have come together. We've now agreed heads of terms, they're in there. And that will be a space for businesses. There's the Cambridge Collective, we've also announced that, where, again, independent businesses, such as Milestone Group, who are going to be occupying that building, food, entertainment. Again, independent businesses. So there's a lot of support being provided to businesses, especially independent businesses in the city. We're also running workshops. I understand this week.
Lord Mayor, is this answering a question, or is this a political statement from Mazurick Bell?
How rude are you councillor Smith?
I was wondering.
So just to find the final bit. The workshops for independent and small businesses, we had 60 independent businesses that are looking to set up attend the Business Sheffield workshop. So I thought it was important, Lord Mayor, I'm not making a political statement, I'm just providing an update on the support we are providing to independent businesses, not just in the city centre, but across the city, Lord Mayor. I thought it was important to put that point across. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you. Page 13? 14?
Yes, Lord Mayor, thank you. Firstly, can I just congratulate friends of Ecclesall Woods for actually sort of doing the petition and sort of showing the huge need for crossing in this area? Now, my question, or my points are, I mean, all previous requests for crossings has been rebuffed, because it's just, we've been always told there's no money available. And I've yet to receive a response to my letter requesting information on funding pots. So can I ask councillor Grokot to clarify the funding source for the feasibility study and the provision for a safe crossing on Abbey Lane? I mean, I want assurances really, that there is enough in the pot to pay for all the necessary work. Because looking at the responses, and it's not just in a question three, it's throughout, the commitment is to look for a feasibility study rather than to actually implement changes. And I'm sorry, because my other screen's frozen, I can't actually identify the precise letter wording. But can I have the assurances, please? There is money, which pot it's coming from? And it's not, it's more than a feasibility study, there will be action taken.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for the question councillor Masters. We have £4 million Road Safety Fund pot that the feasibility study work is coming out of. I think it's important, it's prudent, it's sensible that we do that work first. As Chloe explained today, I know, well, I lived round there for a long time, there are lots of potential crossings on that road. We need to make sure that we get the crossings, whatever we need to do on the road, in the right places, so that they will be used, that they will be safe. Until we actually look at the feasibility, we don't know what we are going to find. So we need to do that piece of work, find out what is there, and then look at what we can do that deals with the situation, that addresses the issues and concerns, and can be managed on that piece of road. So we do the feasibility, then we look at what can be done to deal with the issues. That's the way it has to be done, that's the way it's always done. Because it will be the easiest thing for me to say in the world, oh yeah, let's put crossings here, here and here. There could be all sorts of reasons why that couldn't happen, that are genuine, that are real, that would cause lots of problems. So that will be, so that will be happening. We will do the feasibility work. As a local councillor for that area, I will of course keep you updated. I apologise if you haven't had a response to me for something that has slipped me by. I do apologise, but I will look into that immediately after this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So action will be taken on the ground. Thank you.
Anything else on 14? 15?
I think it's important, it's prudent, it's sensible that we do that work first. As Chloe explained today, I know, I lived round there for a long time, there are lots of potential crossings on that road. We need to make sure that we get the crossings, whatever we need to do on the road, in the right places, so that they will be used, that they will be safe. Until we actually look at the feasibility, we don't know what we are going to find. So we need to do that piece of work, find out what is there, and then look at what we can do that deals with the situation, that addresses the issues and concerns, and can be managed on that piece of road. So we do the feasibility, then we look at what can be done to deal with the issues. That's the way it has to be done, that's the way it's always done. Because it will be the easiest thing for me to say in the world, oh yeah, let's put crossings here, here and here. There could be all sorts of reasons why that couldn't happen, that are genuine, that are real, that would cause lots of problems. So that will be, so that will be happening. We will do the feasibility work. As a local councillor for that area, I will of course keep you updated. I apologise if you haven't had a response to me for something that has slipped me by. I do apologise, but I will look into that immediately after this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So action will be taken on the ground. Thank you.
Anything else on 14? Fifteen? Sixteen?
Lord Mayor? Councillor Auckland, oh.
Councillor Auckland, yes.
Yeah. So it's Q2 A2, page 16. Can I ask the cabinet member if indeed she and the administration are still committed to planning service reforms? And why, if there still are, and what do they hope to achieve? And why not if they've abandoned them? We're advertising for a new head of planning, and the acting head was trying to push through these reforms. And I rather got the impression that management aren't managing, that the administration isn't giving a lead. And union processes are just miring it all in slowdown. And given that the planning service can attract criticism, only the other day, the Star commented in the editorial about criticism from potential developers. This is having a bad effect on the city's reputation. So what's her position on this? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Auckland. Any of us who've ever worked in any kind of employment understand the importance and the need to review and refresh procedures, processes, everything as we go along. It's what we need to do to make sure that what we're doing is up to date, it's giving a good service, it's getting the best out of the employees, it's giving them the best in terms of career structure and advancement that they can have. And it's making sure that we deliver a service that is the best it can be, meets the needs of the people that we're giving it to. So yes, the review is paused at the moment for lots of reasons, which are explained in the answers that were written down. It is something that we are looking to move on with and get done as quickly as we possibly can, because I appreciate it's not helpful that it has been taking so long. But it is ongoing, and it is important that it is done.
Thank you. I've got time for one more before I close this because of the time that we've got. Anything else on 16? 17? 18? 19? Councillor Shaffack, are you indicating?
I'd like to ask a question on 34 if no one else does. So I'm trying to get in early, Lord Mayor.
Well, we're not going to get to 34, I'm afraid. Let's go through until we see how far we do get. I've got to 19. 20. 21. 22.
Yes, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Turpin?
Feel like I've won the bingo. So I have several questions on page 22, Lord Mayor. Would you advise me to pick the one that I care most about?
And any further supplementaries for today's meeting? I would advise that you write to, all of you, you write to your cabinet member to get the supplementary answers. But yes, just pick the ones out that are most relevant to you at the moment.
Okay, well, they all are, you know, but you know. All right, so question five, councillor Jones. What have you done to, oh, I'm looking at the wrong one, what consultation took place that you referred to? Because I certainly wasn't consulted. And will you share that information with me, please? And something that I'd just like to bring up is that with you changing the opening hour. So basically, the amount of hours that Blackstock Road site is open is the same. You've just moved it half an hour forwards. And I appreciate that the sites are now going to be open seven days a week, and I welcome that. And I'm glad that you were listening to me. One of the problems that we have every day, which you would have known if you had have consulted me, is that the queues begin before the site opens at 10 o'clock. And the only way to get rid of those queues so far that you have provided us with is that we can send parking enforcement officers there to shoot people off under the threat of a fine. Now, they can't get there for 10 o'clock, because their first job of the morning is to go and police schools and dodgy parking at schools. So they do that, and then they have to get back to the base for a comfort break, and then get back out to their next job, which is to go to Blackstock Road. But that, they can't get there by 10 o'clock. And by the way, the parking enforcement department are pretty fed up with being put in the position that they have to sort out the failings of this waste contract. So how, if they can't get there for 10 o'clock, how on earth are they going to get there for half nine?
There was actually two questions in there, councillor Turpin. So I applaud your endeavour at trying to get to for the price of one. The consultation was done at the household waste recycling centres, and everybody who visited was given the option to fill out a questionnaire as to what time they wanted the household waste recycling centres to open. That consultation was done within the council remit, and the results are there. There is a cabinet paper, ICMD, that's gone through to highlighting those things that you'll see on the council papers. The idea of opening up at half nine is to try and release some of those pressures from people queuing earlier. You're quite right. It could be a case that, you know, ultimately, we'd need to open all our sites at eight in the morning. But then you risk having people travelling around the city in rush hour. So would that be a detriment to the city and our carbon footprint? For me, being as women, and such like, I'm not sure what I can say. It is clear that our sites are struggling for capacity, and it is clear that we need to do more to try and get more people onto the sites as best as we can. Whether these situations persist, once the lockdown starts to ease and more people go back to work, and spend less time at home and in their gardens and making less rubbish, and maybe people stop buying so much from Amazon, who now, my partner said that she went to order something from Amazon, and there was a five pound oceanal fee that she could pay to Amazon to have less packaging. Why? Why is that? Why is the issue that we're seeing with our household waste recycling, the fact that so many people are buying so much at home and having so much additional packaging that they're having to dispose of? That is very much the feeling that we're having at the moment. So it does come back to, there needs to be some element of looking at the waste hierarchy, reduce, repair, reuse, recycle. At the moment, it seems to be Amazon deliver it, and you have to dump it, and we have to pick up the bill without them paying taxes. So there isn't an easy answer to this one at this moment in time. And maybe, maybe it's something that we can mitigate otherwise, but I'm not sure under per, do I can say what I want my desires to be. But thank you.
Thank you. I'm afraid I'm going to bring that to a close now, because we're going, we've strayed over the 30 minutes for this item. I'm now going to move to item number seven, notice of motion regarding bus services. There is a maximum time limit of 25 minutes for this item. May I call upon councillor Shaffack Mohammed, please, to move the motion? You may speak for up to three minutes. Thank you.
Lord Mayor, my understanding was that it was going to be councillor in Auckland.
Oh, well, I've got it as you, but if councillor Ian Auckland wants to move it, then that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor. The confusion, please don't add this on to my time. I think was to do with, you know, who could move in second.
Yeah, I think so long as you're not a candidate, councillor Auckland, that's fine. So long as you're not a candidate, that's fine.
Well, that was the issue then, Lord Mayor. I mean, it is whether I'm standing or not.
Could I ask the monitoring officer?
I don't want to get it wrong, Lord Mayor, but originally, I was going to propose it. But obviously, I shadowed the portfolio. And then, then we had to change it to Shaffack and Penny on advice. And then my understanding was the advice had changed. So I hate to eat into the time, but you know, I'm happy with it.
Are you a candidate, Ian? Are you a candidate?
Well.
Just a minute, let me get some clarification.
Yeah, I'm intending to be, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. The advice that came from myself and the chief executive was that it would be preferable if it wasn't candidates in the next election that's coming up, who were moving in second in, because you're making speeches. The whip suggested that that was not what we've previously done. And therefore, what I've said is that, okay, that's fine, you can put up who you want to make the speeches, but we are within the pre-election period, and therefore there should be no political statements within those speeches.
Lord Mayor, I'll do my best then. I'm sure somebody would, I'm sure you would stop me, or somebody, I'm quite happy if that has to change. So I'll kick off, shall I?
Lord Mayor, could I just ask a question, please? I just find it quite bizarre that people who are about to be asked to choose their local representative are being barred from hearing them speak. It just seems absolutely ridiculous. You know, if I was someone in, I don't know, Andrews constituency, and he was up for election, I'd want to hear what he got to say a month before the election, not having gagged.
Just to get some more clarification from the monitoring officer, please.
The restriction councillor Rooney is around use of council resources for promoting political purposes. So councillor Auckland can speak all he wants when he's not using council resources in order to support that political statement.
I'll go with it, Lord Mayor then. I'll try. So I'll go.
Right, okay.
So, Lord Mayor, firstly, I'd just like to say, I think it's not right to blame austerity on this occasion, as in the case of the Labour amendment. We all know the problem with the bus service goes back to Thatcher. And then in truth, to the Blair administration, the Blair premiership, when nothing much was done.
We shouldn't be straying into politics though, Ian, come on. You know, you know the rules.
Oh, Lord Mayor. What I'm trying to do is, I'm not trying to mention political parties.
You have done though.
I told. But okay, let's, let's, right. Our citizens depend on decent bus services. And I believe that the way to achieve that is through a franchising arrangement. And it is a position that I've held consistently on the council for all the time that I've shadowed the transport portfolio. And I actually believe that history has proved me right, that the bus partnership agreement, which the council is a party to, has actually turned out to be a bus service cutting arrangement, as our bus services have declined over the years. Now, the South Yorkshire Sheffield City Region, so the regional mayor, has the power to franchise bus services. And I wish he would exercise them, because he's missed an opportunity here to do that because of the government's paper on buses. He's only just got round to recruiting a franchising team and a programme director. So any delay, and to me, it's been 10 wasted years, in putting forward franchising as an option, is actually down to him. And I begin to feel, Lord Mayor, that the mayor is lukewarm on bus franchising. And it really worries me, because although the bus companies don't have a business at the moment, without public money being pumped in on a massive scale, they have powerful friends at Westminster and Whitehall, across all political parties. And if they manage to get away with something called an enhanced partnership, which to me is very much a second best option, then what will happen is that they will start to lobby away, saying, don't take a risk on anything else. Skip with this, you know it will work. And the people of Sheffield will continue to have a worth of bus service. So I say to anybody who might be in a position of influence on this matter, for goodness sake, stand firm against the bus companies. Get on board the bus. And as my alarm goes off for three minutes, don't miss the bus. Don't be asleep at the wheel. Make certain that Sheffield citizens get the bus service they agree, which is accountable through people they elect. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Can I call upon councillor Colin Ross to second that?
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. As we've seen numerous times in this chamber, and no doubt in our own casework, buses are of great concern to many Sheffield residents, well, in fact, the lack of buses, I should say, sometimes. The decline in the number of services and their reliability is going back many years, and can be traced back to the, or I can't say political party, deregulation of the buses in the 1980s. London buses is the exception to this, but they were exempt from deregulations. Now, locally, we've had the Clive Betts review of bus services and its failings, which was a comprehensive document. And I, as chair of the Sheffield City Region scrutiny board, had a very productive session with Clive Betts and the mayor on this, examined it in detail. We agreed with a lot of the recommendations, in fact, most of what was said and what was uncovered. In particular noted were the failings of SYPT to take on the bus operators and respond adequately to public complaints. We need to ensure that in taking the SYPT functions to the Merrill Combined Authority, that it results in a cultural change and a more robust, on a more robust approach.
Obviously, we're all struggling with our grief around athletes being more.
Sorry, can I pause, Lord Mayor? Somebody's.
We've all been up and down, you know, we've all had a cry.
Can I?
Carry on.
Can I have the extra time back from the interruption?
Yeah.
Yeah. The Bus Back Better National Strategy alongside the Sheffield City Region going forward gives us an opportunity we must not miss. This is why the enhanced partnership, which has to be part of the going forward, must only be as a stepping stone to franchising. Let us admit, actually, the experience of the bus partners in Sheffield has not been great, to put it mildly. We on this side have long and consistently advocated the route to franchising as serving the needs of Sheffield and wider South Yorkshire best. Manchester has pointed the way, and we can learn from them and hopefully introduce franchising at a more rapid pace than we have here. So let's push on towards franchising and pull the bus services up to the required standard. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ross, thank you. There are two proposed amendments, and these are numbers three and four on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. May I call upon councillor Julie Grokot to move amendment three? You may speak for up to two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The amendment to this motion sets out clearly how we are committed to providing public transport across the whole city for all of the residents. Connecting Sheffield strategy integrates active travel with public transport, which is safe, clean, energy efficient, and has a positive impact on the climate pollution, health and lifestyles of the people of Sheffield. We are committed to an ambitious programme for public transport. The extension of concessional travel to the under-21s in our city shows that we believe in our young people, want to give them every opportunity to succeed. As is set out in the amendment, Sheffield City Region partners are investing 3.2 million pounds to improve the regional networks. And we are replacing a third of community transport with clean, energy electric vehicles, upgrading 300 bus shelters and installing electronic displays on 250 bus stops. We are working across the region to introduce cheap fares and to integrate with other modes of public transport across the whole region. The plans provide a stronger, fairer and greener economy to sustain our city, linking it to the Connecting Sheffield schemes, the Heart of the City project, and more importantly, our district centres. As councillor Ross has said, the government pays lip service to public transport in the north, spending the equivalent of £76 per head on public transport in London and only £5 in Sheffield. £5 in Sheffield. The Bus Back Better Strategy has no real vision or commitment to public transport. Thank goodness the City Region Mayor commissioned a comprehensive bus review, providing clear direction for the future of our public transport across the region. The City Region are driving the bus towards safe, reliable, frequent and clean service and I love the amendment, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. May I call upon councillor Ben Miskel to second the amendment, please?
Lord Mayor, residents in my ward, one of the most deprived of the whole city and one of the most disadvantaged in the entire country, really rely upon buses. They're a lifeline, getting people to jobs that often start at really unsociable times in the morning and end late in the evening. Many people in my ward are keepers who held this city together through the pandemic and continue to work throughout. Often, they simply don't have the luxury of opting for other modes of transport. But, Lord Mayor, residents in my ward have been let down for too long by a bus service that doesn't serve their needs. It's a deregulated free-for-all which urgently needs to be brought to an end. For too long, despite the best efforts of this council, this city has had a bus network that fails Sheffielders. When it comes to routings, frequency, connectivity between different modes of transport, and that's not even commenting on the scandalously high ticket price charged to citizens, this really must come to an end. That's why I'm proud of the bus review that was led by Clive Betts MP and the unity amongst my colleagues in pushing to take back public control of bus networks. In fact, today, we've seen a joint statement issued by Dan Jarvis and the leaders of Sheffield, Rotherham, Doncaster and Barnsley, saying that franchising is very much on the table. And I look forward to that because it's, if it's right for London with its £76 per head of population investment in buses, then it's right for Sheffield where we currently almost see a measly £5 per head of population invested. Lord Mayor, I ask that members support this amendment.
Thank you. May I call upon councillor Richard Shaw to move amendment number four, please? You may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I support the motion by councillors Auckland and Ross. The current administration's bus partnership has failed to deliver a stable, reliable and affordable bus network. It is a bus cuts partnership. My ward, like many, has lost several bus services and routes over the past few years and I regularly receive complaints or requests from members of the public for improvements to reliability or reinstatement of services, such as the old number 17 that used to run up Green Hill Avenue from town to Jordanford via Chancet Wood. The Covid pandemic over the past year has inevitably put a great deal of pressure on our public transport with the collapse in passenger numbers. As the country recovers, it's inevitable that working patterns and everyday life in general may not go back exactly to way, to the way they were, but we cannot allow for this to translate into a wholesale collapse of our bus services. I recall in my first ever council meeting as an elected member in 2014 that the then leader of the council said that the reason we have poor services in Sheffield is because the then government deregulated bus services in 1986. But since power was devolved to the city region to reintroduce franchising, they have so far been sat on their hands. We need to take a revolutionary approach that has been hitherto altogether lacking from the administration and the mayor of city region, in contrast to the mayor of Greater Manchester, who has decided to proceed with arrangements for bus franchising. Sheffield needs a stable, reliable and affordable bus network and franchising will give local communities a say in shaping the services they need and deserve. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. May I call upon councillor Barbara Masters to second the amendment, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I am pleased to second our amendment. We need to seize this opportunity to revolutionise our public transport system. If we are to tackle climate change and nurture our environment, we must reduce our reliance on the car. Easier to achieve in and around our city centre, but not so easy for those living in the outskirts or rural areas beyond. I want to speak for those who don't have a public transport system worthy of a name, those for whom the choice is stark, own a car or limit access to what is within walking or cycling distance in all weathers. I spent many years under the latter conditions and it was no rule adil, I assure you. The steady reduction in the bus network severely curtails opportunities for those living in straitened circumstances in the hinterland. The tragedy is that this situation has got steadily worse over years. The countryside is becoming the preserve of the rich as a disparity between the have and have nots widens. Bus franchising would allow us to address the decline in our bus network, not just within the city, but its hinterland as well. Bus services would be our, under our control. We could create a more equitable future for our rural communities without undermining efforts to decarbonise our economy. We cannot expect people to play their part in tackling the climate emergency without giving them the ability to do so. I regret that the administration's amendments, full of self-congratulatory rhetoric and blame in equal measures, fails to add anything of substance to the debate. We have been pressing for bus franchising for many years and its belated recognition that we are right is welcome. Therefore, I commend our amendments to fellow councillors. We need action now, not just intentions. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to move to the debate on the matter and could I call upon councillor Shafak Mohammed, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, the reason I want to speak in this debate is that actually the issues that councillor Miskel raised around the access to public transport aren't just limited to the most deprived areas of the city. Actually, only yesterday, Lord Mayor, I had an elderly resident of the Ecclesmore area asking me about buses, in particular buses from his part of Sheffield that go past the Hallamshire. And this issue, Mayor, will be just as relevant for those people that need to go to the Royal, the Northern General Hospital. There are lots and lots of residents in our city, regardless of whether they are rich or poor, who need access to major sites in our city, particularly the hospitals, and they have to rely on public transport. As councillor Richard Shaw says, the Sheffield Bus Partnership may well be rebadged as a Sheffield Bus Cuts Partnership because that's what it seems to have delivered. And what we now need to do is grasp this opportunity that exists and just look over the Pennines and see what Andy Burnham is doing. We've got to move quicker, we've got to move faster and we've got to see how we can actually bring those buses back into control so we can actually look at routes, we can look at fares and we can look at frequency. Because at the moment, the bus companies are picking and choosing what they do and our residents right across the city, regardless of which areas they live in, are the victims of these bus cuts and they are hitting the most vulnerable and the most isolated the hardest. And I pledged to that resident yesterday that I would be bringing his concerns directly to this council, so thank you, Lord Mayor, for that opportunity to speak and I will be supporting our original motion and I hope other colleagues from across the council chamber will be also able to support the first notice of motion that we've got today.
Thank you. Councillor Penny Baker, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As someone who has sort of given herself a reputation as fighting for buses, having the headlines of a star more and once and letters from the regional mayor, I can't let this pass without speaking. If we want to build a stronger, greener and fairer economy and communities, we need to have an accessible, affordable and particularly reliable bus service citywide, whether we're an old lady on a rural lane or we're a one-parent family on a council estate, it doesn't matter. We all need to have a reliable bus service that we can go out of our house at a specific time and get on a bus and it will turn up and it will take us to where it's supposed to be. It won't turn down two miles round the road, it won't not turn up because there's something slightly wrong with the engine, because there'll be one in reserve and we have somebody there that cares. That a bus that's supposed to take somebody from one area of the city at 8.06 will get there at 8.06 and it will get them to work by 8.39. That way our NHS, our councils, our shops, our businesses can work appropriately without a reliable green bus service or public service, because of course we have Supertram, our economy and our city will not function properly. It is that important. It is that important to every citizen in this city that they can rely on our buses and that's what this is all about. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Baker. Councillor Mark Jones, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Following on from some of the previous speakers, it's absolutely incumbent on us to get this right in terms of getting bus services up and running. We have to do this. We need a fully integrated transport system that works and suits for everybody, where we can differentiate the journeys that we take by the distances we're travelling. And it's not just buses that we should be focusing on. As councillor Baker rightly said, we have, we have the Supertram, an amazing historic network that really does need to be fully used. But a Supertram on its own is not sufficient because once you get to the tram stop, you then possibly still have a significant onwards journey from there. So that's where the buses can certainly take, take some of that journey differentiation. We also need to make sure that the buses run the routes that we need them to do. Far too often, they run circular routes around the city and you have to hop on and off buses frequently to get to where you want to go. It can't be right that, I once tried to get on a bus on Spittle Hill and the quickest route for me to get home was to go via Meadow Hall into Hillsborough. How insane is that? That, that makes no sense. How does that bus service come to exist like that? No wonder it puts so many people off where you spend half an hour travelling in the wrong direction to then get the right bus home. It doesn't make any sense whatsoever. So we really do have to make sure that we get this right and we have to make sure that the buses are taken in part of a coordinated, a concerted transport system, including taxis and including trams and including trains and that integration needs to work thoroughly. And we do need our buses to be clean. Far too often Sheffield has been the dumping ground for dirty buses from other cities as they've decided to cascade their, their unwanted vehicles our way. We can't put up with that, we cannot accept a second-class service for our citizens, we cannot tolerate that whatsoever.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
And the final speaker is councillor Mike Lavery, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll be brief. As a councillor in one of those hinterland wards, I also have some, two areas of extreme deprivation, which is Anglin Bank Estate and the Green Gate Lane, Warroad School Road Estate. Before lockdown, from High Green and Anglin Bank Estate, we just had two buses, one hourly, the 135, which went down the A61 corridor to Hillsborough and subsequently Sheffield, and the other number one service which went down Chapel Down corridor and into town that way. First, remove the 135 service. That meant residents who worked in Hillsborough had to taxi to work and back. Nothing would change our minds. The only thing that's recovered the situation has been Covid and the service has been put back on. This is no way to cover the city in terms of providing services to people who are deprived. And it's about time we did move quickly to a franchising arrangement. So we do effectively and adequately cover this city with frequent and regular bus services. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And I'm going to offer the right to reply to councillor in Auckland, please.
Sorry, Lord Mayor, I think there was a last minute request from councillor Baker to speak, it's his last council meeting.
No, he didn't, no, he didn't ask to speak, he just said it's my last council meeting. I don't know, did you want to speak, David?
I think we should let him if he does, Lord Mayor.
No, I think, I think he may have gone, I'm not sure.
He's saying yes, Lord Mayor.
He's saying yes, all right, okay, it's his last meeting, I better let him speak. Councillor David Baker. I think you might be on mute, David.
Lots of people wished I was on mute for a long time. Like every single councillor, including some Lord Mayor that's been gone for, retired, we've all had complaints about buses. Now, I remember the time when city council owned the buses, ran the buses, bus services and it was tough for your kids to go anywhere and it was a good, reliable service. Maybe the buses weren't the cleanest in the country, but they, they arrived on time and they were always full and there was far, far fewer cars on the road. So I think, looking forward, franchising does seem to me, and I'm no expert on this, but franchising does seem to me to be the only way forward. And I think we've all got to get behind this, irrespective of which party we belong to. We all want better bus service for our citizens. So it's all I'm going to say is, I support the franchising and obviously I support my own party's amendment and position on this, but I would urge everybody to look seriously at the terrible bus service we've got at the moment where buses chase each other and go past half-empty because the people are losing faith in the buses. We've got to get away from this and, and I urge you all, please, to support franchising and a better bus service. And while I'm on, Lord Mayor, if you can please excuse me, to say that it is my last council meeting and I would like to thank all councillors, past and present, for 30 very happy years amongst you. Thank you.
Thank you, David, and all the very, very best to you. And also I'd like to just say that I was a driver in those days when the kids' fares were 2p, I know, and, and we had the, we had the cheap fares policy, yeah, very good. Okay, thank you for that. Now for councillor Auckland, right to reply, please.
Yeah, well, thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you, thank you, David, for all, for all your service. The, I just want to emphasise the point that, that they, the franchising bus might, might be missed. We, the, the bus companies are still against franchising arrangements, even, even though they really don't have a business without the amount of public money currently being put in. And in my opinion, they didn't have a business without the amount of money that was previously put in by, and continues to be put in by, by the, by public money. So I just emphasise again that it's so important that all of us, as we all seem to be of the same opinion, go for the best option that is currently on the table, which is a franchising arrangement, in my opinion, which seems to be shared across the chamber, and that, and that we don't give an opportunity for the bus companies to wriggle out of it at some point in, in, in the near future because, forgive me, I'm not meaning to strain to politics with a capital P, but the political wind in government may change and then we will find ourselves in difficulty again. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. It appears that there will be a consensus. Is this amendment agreed? I would take silence as affirmation of the meeting. If any member wishes to dissent, please unmute and speak.
Is this to the Labour Amendment, Lord Mayor?
Sorry, it's amendment number, yes, amendment number two, amendment number three, sorry.
Amendment number three.
By councillor, councillor Grokert.
Sorry. Can I just check, are we talking about the Labour Amendment?
Talking about the amendment number three by councillor Grokert, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So we will be, as a group, we will be voting against that amendment.
Yeah, must do.
This vote will be conducted via Zoom raised hands function unless a recorded vote is requested. May I remind members of the guidance provided to them yesterday on using the Zoom raise hand function? Depending on the type of device you are using, the raise hand command appears by clicking participants or pressing on more, more in your controls at the bottom or the top of your screen. I shall conduct three separate votes, firstly seeking raised hands, then seeking, four, then seeking raised hands again. then seeking four, then seeking raised hands against and then seeking raised hands for those wishing to abstain. Between each vote, I shall ask the host of the meeting to lower all the raised hands. Before I start the vote, are members happy to vote on the amendment as a whole or in each separate paragraph? So councillor Auckland. So Auckland.
Yeah, we'll vote as a whole against the amendment.
Right, okay, okay. Please can the host ensure that there are no raised hands? Okay, okay. All those in favour of amendment three, moved by councillor Julie Grokot, please raise your hands now and please leave them raised.
Well, Mayor, I'm pressing raise hands and it's not raising.
Have you gone into participants?
I mean, that's what I am. I'm pressing raise and it's not doing it. So can I?
You could say on the bottom, raise hand. You just click on that.
I've clicked on it several times, Lord Mayor. It's not raising.
There's always one.
It's always me, Lord Mayor.
Right, can you record that? We're going to record that one. How many? That's 38 for. Please can the host of the meeting lower all the raised hands? All those against amendment three, please raise your hands now and please leave it raised. Against. Have we got 34? Yeah. So that's 34 against. On all those abstaining from voting on amendment number three, please raise your hands now and please leave it raised.
Lord Mayor, I just I just noticed then that you that you'd cast a vote on that last on that last count. Was that intentional or an accidental?
Oh, that was a mistake, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah. Yeah, sorry, yeah. So that makes that 33, does it? I I, yeah, yes. So that's taking me off that and it's 33, yeah. We are on abstentions now. Have you lowered the hands? Yeah, yeah. So we're now going to, have I asked for abstentions? I got interrupted there, but rightly so. So all those abstaining from voting on amendment number three, please raise your hands now and leave it raised. Thank you. Sorry. No, nothing, none. So there were no abstentions. That's lost. Oh, 38, 38 for, 33 against and no abstentions. That 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 is carried. That amendment number three is carried, yeah. Let's see, please. I'm now going to for the for the rest of the amendments, because we've passed the guillotine, we're going to have to do it. Sorry? All right, okay, so sorry, I'm ahead of myself here. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number four, moved by councillor Richard Shaw. This vote will be conducted using Zoom for raised hand function unless a recorded vote is requested. Before I start the vote, are members happy to vote on the amendment as a whole or in each separate paragraph? Please can the host of the meeting ensure that there are no raised hands? All those in favour of amendment number four by councillor Richard Shaw, please raise your hands now and please leave it raised. 33. Thank you. Please can the host of the meeting lower all the raised hands? Right. All those against amendment number four, please raise your hand now and please leave it raised. Oh, yeah. Tony Dams has worked it out.
Lord Mayor, I think councillor Law has got his hand raised.
Is he?
On screen.
Chair, I just can't get the yellow yellow hand to raise. What can we put my hand up?
Okay, okay. How many? Four zero, yeah. Okay. Right, please can the host of the meeting lower all the raised hands? Okay, okay, we've done it, yeah, okay. Um all those abstaining from voting on amendment number four, please raise your hands now and please leave it raised.
Lord Mayor, there's still a hand raised from the previous vote. It doesn't seem to have been cleared.
Yeah, just. It's cleared, so we're going to do abstentions again, please. All those abstaining from voting on amendment number four, please raise your hands now and please leave it raised. No. No, no. So that's 33 for, 40 against and no abstentions. So that that amendment number four by councillor Richard Shaw is lost. Thank you. Okay. Which way we're going now? Sorry? Oh, yeah. I'm now going to move on the vote on to the vote on the substantive motion. The vote, this vote will be conducted using the Zoom raised hand facility. Right. Right, let me just go through this because I'm just, I'm good. It's it's. Is the substantive motion agreed? I will take silence. Yes.
Lord Mayor, in voting for the substantive motion, we will be against paragraph A, so we want to vote in parts.
Right, okay, you've got that. All right. I will take silence with that. Is there a green one? Is that green? Yeah, councillor Phipps.
Oh, sorry, I thought you said, is there a green one? I've missed that, sorry.
Right. Yeah. We're just trying to deem if there is a consensus with the exception of the lib dem, the lib dem thing. I will take silence as the affirmation of the meeting for the substantive motion. Is that agreed? If not, if unmute and speak. Looks like that's agreed. Okay. So that's that's carried. Thank you very much.
Lord Mayor.
Hello.
Can I move a procedural motion that we extend guillotine so we can hear the speeches, just the speeches on the green motion? I appreciate this is past time.
No, no, we passed the guillotine councillor councillor Phipps. Because what I want to do now is just wind this up now and get and get the other motions voted on formally.
I did put something in in the chat earlier on, actually, just to flag it. And I thought there would be an appropriate time now. And this is our only motion of the year and with respect to not biasing one way or the other with the council meeting.
Okay, okay, listen, I've taken advice. I'll need a proposal, a second, uh?
I suppose.
We've got a second. Right, okay. All those in favour of moving standing orders to do the speeches on the next on the next motion? How many hands are up? So we're going to do it on the? We're gonna, we're gonna ask you to vote on the raised hands, please, because we can't see every screen. So can you just clear the screens of raised hands? Right. All those in favour of voting for what councillor Phipps has just said, I think you've all heard him, and that is to extend standing orders to let them get the speeches in on the motion. All in favour of that, please raise your hands now. Right, can you lower the hands, please? 33.
Hello? You all right? I am, yeah, I'll have to call you back.
All those.
Mary, you've got your.
All those, excuse me, all those against, please raise your hands now.
I'm sorry, Lord Mayor, it's not working again. It worked last time, it's not working this time. But I want to raise my hand.
I'm going to kick you out.
I wish you would, Lord Mayor.
I don't think any of them are.
Right.
Lord Mayor, whoever's flicking the screen around is not actually helping those of us who are trying to check whether our hands are up.
That happens, mate.
How many you got there?
Mine is not working now.
36, 36. 36 against. How many four? 33. Right, can you lower the hands? We'll just have abstentions and then all those, all those wanting, voting to abstain, please raise your hands now. So so that is, there was 33 votes for and 36 against, so that was lost. Okay. So now I'm going to move on to notice of motion eight. This will be just done formally. Can I call upon councillor Peter Garbutt, please, to move the motion? Can't hear him, yeah.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. May I call upon councillor Andrew Argenzio to second the motion, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Formally seconded.
Thank you. There are three proposed amendments and these are numbers five, six and seven on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. May I call upon councillor Mark Jones to move amendment number five, please?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
May I call upon councillor Mary Lee to second amendment number five, please?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. May I call upon councillor Tim Huggan to move amendment six? You may speak for up to two minutes. No, you don't, no, you can't.
I can't. I was going to say, thank you very much.
He's formally, he's formally made. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. May I call upon councillor Alan Hooper to second amendment?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. May I call upon councillor Alison Toole to move amendment number seven, please?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. May I call upon councillor Paul Turpin to second the amendment?
Fine.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And now going to move to the vote on amendment number five, moved by councillor Mark Jones. Let me page you over. Oh, where are we? Page what? 27? 37, I'm going to say it can be 27. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number five, moved by councillor Mark Jones. Where is it? Sorry about this, folks. It's good job it's my last meeting.
They're against this.
Well, I thought we were going to vote them all through formally. All right, okay.
Lord Mayor, my my hand isn't being raised, I can't.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Well, it's done now.
I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number five. Is that right? Moved by councillor Jones, Mark Jones. Is the amendment agreed? I will take silence as the affirmation of the meeting. If any member wishes to dissent, please unmute.
Yeah, Lord Mayor. We as we will be voting against the Labour amendment.
Okay. We're going to have to do, we're going to have to do, so this vote will be conducted using raised hands function unless a recorded vote is requested. Before I start the vote, are members happy to vote on the amendment as a whole or in each separate paragraph? Right, we've got that.
No, sorry, we're going to be voting in parts.
Right.
So we're voting against, we're voting against one and two of the Labour amendment, but we're voting for three.
Right, okay. Please can the host of the meeting ensure that there are no raised hands? All those in favour of amendment number five, moved by councillor Mark Jones, please raise your hands now and please leave them raised. 41. Please can the host of the meeting lower all the raised hands? Oh, sorry, yeah. Well, we're fought, there were 41 votes for in that in that vote. All those against amendment number five, please raise your hands now and please leave it raised.
Lord Mayor, there's been a problem with mine not not showing up.
What are you voting?
Uh, I'm voting against.
Okay. 32. So the number of votes against is 32. Can the host please lower all the raised hands? All those abstaining from voting on amendment number five, please raise your hands now and please leave it raised. No? No. So there were no abstentions on that. So that was that amendment number five, moved by councillor Mark Jones, was, what's the word? Carried. Right. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number six by councillor Tim Huggan. Is this amendment agreed? I will take silence as affirmation of the meeting. If any member wishes to dissent, please unmute and speak.
Lord Mayor, we'll be voting in parts.
Right, okay. So, okay, this vote will be. You're voting in parts, which parts? You you you're muted or something.
Yeah, not now, sorry, take my finger off the spacebar. Um, Lord Mayor, in voting. Lord Mayor, in voting against this amendment, we will be voting for one, ten to two I, and we will be abstaining on two J.
Right, okay. Can we just, can you just repeat that, just for the benefit of the people that's writing it down for us?
Yes, sorry, I know, it's very complicated. So in voting against this, we will be voting for. One, ten to two I, and we'll be abstaining on. Two J.
We got that. Yeah. Okay. Okay, this vote will be conducted via Zoom raised hand function unless the recorded vote is requested. Before I start the vote, are members happy to vote the amendment on, oh, oh, I've done that, haven't I? Run over me, run over old road. Please, can the host of the meeting ensure there are no raised hands? All those in favour of amendment number six, moved by councillor Tim Huggan, please raise your hands now and please leave it raised.
Lord Mayor, the eighty-two participants have completely disappeared from my, my screen.
Have they? They're not on, they're, they're on mine.
Well.
Roger, we're here, you're not.
But.
We're here, Roger, it's you that's gone.
Are you trying to cheat it? Watch it, man. Watch it, mate.
We, we, we've got the record here of how many's voted anyway.
It's only banter, mate, it's only.
I just voted with the party, anyway. Gilbert and Sullivan, that's me.
What we got? Thirty-four.
It's been gone a long time.
Right, well, there's a number of votes for us.
I have been rude.
Please, can the host of the meeting lower all the raised hands? All those against amendment number six, please raise your hand now and please leave it raised. The number of votes against was forty. Please, can the host of the meeting lower all the raised hands?
Lord Mayor, I don't think I've got Tony Dams.
I raised my hand.
Yeah, quite clearly forty-one, Lord Mayor, there were forty, there were forty with the raised hands, plus councillor Dams raised his physical hand.
I raised it and then it came down, I don't know why.
Just a moment, just a moment. Right. We're not recording the vote, we're just using it as a way to get an outcome. Is that all right? Yeah, okay. Right, I'm gonna do, all those abstaining from voting on amendment number six, please raise your hands now and please re, leave it raised. None?
None.
None. Okay. Yeah, right. So that motion has been carried in parts. Because.
Well, the Labour groups wanting to vote in part, they voted against.
Yeah, yeah.
They voted for, so those being carried.
Yeah.
Also abstained, which means that the other votes have carried.
Hmm, right, yeah. Yeah. Okay, so. Just wanna do this to make my last day. The, the amendment is carried, but the, the Labour group have voted against one, six, seven, eight, nine. And. Is that right? Sorry, somebody's shaking her head.
Councillor Hurst is, Lord Mayor.
Have I got this wrong?
Sorry, this is, this is really, really complicated.
You're telling me.
We voted against one, six to one, nine. We voted for one, ten to two I, and we abstained on two J. So the bit that's been carried is one, ten to two I.
Do I need to repeat that? Please say no.
No, Paul's got it, that, Paul's got it.
No, carry on, Lord Mayor, just carry on.
Yeah. Jay's been carried because you've abst, you've abstained on, yeah?
That's correct.
All right.
That's right.
That's right.
Lord Mayor, before we continue, can I just raise this point? That it's made it very difficult for me now because I can't see the eighty-two participants. If I press on that, I just get three people who are, who are actually asking questions from the panel, that, so completely disappeared. So we've got to get that right.
Roger, we've come to the end now.
Your attendees, not panelists.
Sorry, we must get this technically right.
Yes.
Because, for, for the future.
Excuse me, Roger, you've clicked on.
You must.
Three, you need to.
You, what did you say? Look, I'm.
Be quiet while I'm speaking, thank you. You've clicked on attendees three. If you go to the other side where it says panelist, you need to, you need to, that's the one you click on.
But it just says participants, doesn't it?
No.
And I've clicked on that all the time, it's been okay.
Roger, for clarity, Roger, for clarity, we're nearly at the end anyway, but we can hear you, so, and you can hear us. So just coming for your vote verbally.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, I've, I've voted with the party, but that's not the point. We've got to get this right in the future.
In your side panel, Roger, at the top of your side panel. Look at the top of your side panel where it says, it'll say attendees three in blue and panelists in blank. You just need to touch on panelist and it'll turn blue.
So, sorry, I, I think, Roger, you just need to move to, move to gallery view rather than speaking.
Yes, exactly. The view at the top, if you go.
View at the top.
At the moment, Roger, this meeting's nearly finished, so can we just let the Lord Mayor finish what he's doing?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that, I just, just raise a point, that's all. An important point.
Quite right, Roger. Point well raised, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Point well raised.
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor.
Yes, yeah. So are we clear now what we vote?
No, I was before Roger spoke.
What page? Forty-one. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number seven, moved by councillor Alison Teal. Is the amendment agreed? I will take silence as affirmation of the meeting. If any member wishes to dissent, please unmute and speak.
Lord Mayor, Labour group will be abstaining on this amendment.
Right, okay. Okay, so I'm now going to move to the vote. Before I start the vote, are members happy to vote on the amendment as a whole or in each separate paragraph? Please, can the host of the meeting ensure there are no raised hands? Right. All those in favour of amendment seven, moved by councillor Teal, please raise your hands now and please leave it raised. Hang on. Twenty-eight. Okay. I've got, the number of votes for were twenty-eight. Please, can the host of the meeting lower all the raised hands? All those against amendment seven, please raise your hand now and please leave it raised. Yeah. Yeah, zero, zero there. So with the number of votes against were zero, please can the host lower the me, the hands of all, go on. Yeah. All those abstaining from voting on amendment number seven, please raise your hands now and please leave it raised. How many we got? Thirty-eight. There were thirty-eight abstentions, this means that that amendment is carried. Okay. I'm now going to move to the vote on the substantive motion. Somebody's just whispered good luck in me here. Is the substantive motion agreed? I will take silence as affirmation of the meeting. If any member wishes to dissent, please unmute and speak. It, eh? Yeah, let's move on. This vote will be con, you're gonna, no, no, okay. Okay, so that is. Items, what's that one, carried? That was carried, I thought it was. So that, that motion, that, the substantial motion is carried. Thank you. We'll go to item six, what page are we at?
Representation, Lord Mayor.
Oh dear, it's. What page are you on?
We have to go back to item six.
Item six now, we're going, yeah, item six, when I find it. Page twenty-one, did you say? Right, item six. No. Notice of motion regarding thanking the city's workers and demanding pay justice for them. Right. May I call upon councillor George Lindasammon to move the motion, please?
Formerly moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. May I call upon councillor Josie Pascheck to second the motion, please?
Formerly seconded, Lord Mayor.
There are two proposed amendments and these are numbers one and two on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. May I call upon councillor Mike Leverie to move amendment number one, please?
Formerly moved, Lord Mayor.
May I call upon councillor Joe Otten to second the amendment?
Formerly seconded, Lord Mayor.
Yep. May I call upon councillor Martin Phipps to move amendment number two?
Formerly moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. May I call upon councillor Paul Turpin to second the amendment?
Formerly seconded.
I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number one, moved by councillor Mike Leverie. Is the amendment agreed? I will take silence as affirmation of the meeting. If any member wishes to dissent, please unmute and speak now.
Lord Mayor, Labour group will be voting against this amendment.
Right.
Group will be voting against, definitely.
Okay, so we're gonna vote, conduct the vote using the raised hands function, okay? And not read all that bump fat because you all know what to do now, except Tony Dams. Before I start the vote, are members happy to vote on the amendment as a whole or in each separate paragraph?
Take it down, Mike, now.
Mark, Lord Mayor.
Sorry. Ah, right. Please, can the host of the meeting ensure there are no raised hands? All those in favour of amendment number one, moved by councillor Mike Leverie, please raise your hand now and please leave it raised. Twenty-two? Twenty-two? Twenty-two. Uh, number of votes for, of, of, number of votes for were twenty-two. Please, can the host of the meeting lower all the raised hands? All those against amendment number one, please raise your hands now and leave it raised.
Put yourself somewhere, I'll be five minutes, you're ready.
Forty. Forty-four. Seven, I've got here, yeah. All agreed, forty-seven. Number of votes against were forty-seven. Please, can the host of the meeting lower all the raised hands? All those abstaining from voting on amendment number one, please raise your hands now and please leave it raised. Zero. Yeah. There were no abstentions. So that, that amen, amendment, is it, yeah, amendment number one, raised by councillor Mike Leverie, has, is lost. Thank you. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number two, moved by, moved by councillor Martin Phipps. Is there a member, is the amendment agreed? I will take silence as affirmation of the meeting. If any member wishes to speak, please unmute and speak. No. So that, that, that one is carried then, that amendment number, what is it, amendment? Number two by councillor Phipps is carried, okay? I'm now going to move to the vote on the substantive motion. If the, is a, is a substantive motion agreed? I will take silence as affirmation of the meeting. If any member wishes to dissent, please unmute and speak. No, okay, that's carried then. That's carried, thank you. What have we got now? Back at page. Ten, isn't it? Right, okay. Item ten, minutes of previous council meetings. It is proposed that the minutes of the ordinary meeting of the council held on the third of February twenty twenty-one and the special meeting of the council held on the third of March twenty twenty-one be approved as true and accurate record. Is that motion formally moved?
Formerly moved, Lord Mayor.
Is that motion sec, formally seconded?
Second, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. All agreed, I will take silence as affirmation of the meeting. If any member wishes to speak, please unmute and speak. Okay. What's this one? Right, this is item eleven, representation, delegation, sorry, representation delegated authority and related, and related issues. It is moved by councillor Diane Hur, seconded by councillor Tony Dams, that councillor Aptis Sam Mohammed be appointed to serve on the Joint Commissioning Committee in place of councillor Mark Jones. Councillors Tony Dams and councillor, and councillor Tony Dams and Josie Pascheck be appointed to serve on the new Sheffield Museums Trust in accordance with the decision taken by the Cabinet at its meeting held on the seventeenth of February regarding the merger of Sheffield Industrial Museums Trust and Museum Sheffield into the unified trust from April twenty twenty-one. Councillor Hurst?
Formerly moved, Lord Mayor.
And councillor Dams?
Formerly seconded, Lord Mayor.
I'm now, I'm now going to move to the vote on the motion. Is the motion agreed? I will take silence as affirmation of the meeting. If any member wishes to dissent, please unmute and speak now. Okay. Right. That brings us to the end of today's business.
Lord Mayor, Lord Mayor, before we close, could I, could I just say a few words, please? In particular to put our thanks collectively as members, I'm sure, for the difficult job that you've had to endure throughout this pandemic. It, it's been really, really well appreciated i- in really hard times. I'd also like to add thanks to our previous leader councillor Daw and to councillor Jackie Drayton, as well as councillor David Baker. It's always great when people can represent the city for such long periods, as all three members have done. And I'd just like to put on record my personal thanks to all their support throughout the years, it's been much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Gonna miss you, folks, well done, Lord Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, welcome.
Awesome, Jacky, Julia, been awesome.
Thank you very much, everyone.
You're gonna miss this.
The next, the next meeting, full council meeting, will be conducted by councillor Gail Smith. It'll be led by councillor Gail Smith, whatever the terminology is, she'll be the Lord Mayor. Okay, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Tony. Bye-bye. Safe, everybody. Keep safe, everybody.